Welcome to the regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission on Wednesday, April 16, 2014 at 5:00 PM. Our first item of business is election of a chair pro tem. Do we have nominations from the floor?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Ms. Stephanie Landry again.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? I'm hearing none. Roll call?
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And the next item we have is roll call.
All right.
Here.
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 I'm Menucha's absent. Yes.
All right. You have the cheat sheet here? Can I read this little tiny thing?
Well, actually, the next thing is report regarding the posting of the agenda.
Thank you. Report regarding posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, April 9, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
All right, thank you. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of minutes for the April 2, 2014, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, we are approved. We have no oral communications that I know of that are -- discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. They questioned the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. But I don't believe I have anybody put in an oral communication. All right, seeing none, we'll -- we have no zoning appeals. We have no old Planning Commission items, but I would like to ask Ms. Stottler, is that not the case? I thought I got a message from Ms. -- is that the next meeting that we're going to have it on? Okay, thank you. And now, we'll go to new business. And that is for case number PVAR 1403259, 1403260, and 1403257, which is to expand enrollment at Chamlean School by modifying existing conditions of approval that restrict enrollment to 500 students. The proposed increase would permit a maximum enrollment of 700 students. May I have -- it's both a use variance case, a standards variance case, and a parking reduction permit case. Do I have a staff report?
You do. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The applicant is requesting to expand enrollment at Chamlean School by modifying the existing conditions of approval of the previous -- previously approved use variance, standards variance, and parking reduction permits. Each of those approvals capped enrollment at 500 students. The proposed increase would permit a maximum enrollment of 700 students at the school. No changes to the site or construction of additional buildings are proposed as a result of the project. It's simply an increase enrollment, a modification of that condition. The proposed increase in student enrollment will be accommodated within existing buildings on the campus by existing -- by, I'm sorry, by increasing class sizes and utilizing vacant or underutilized classrooms on the property now. The school campus is located at 4444 Lowell Avenue on the west side of the street between Foothill Boulevard and Abella. The subu site has contained a school for 50 years or so, and Chamlean School has been located there since 1983. While private school use is not a permitted use in the R1 zone, which is the zone it is located, there are many public schools located in similar residential zones in the R1 or R1R zones, and Chamlean really functions the same way as a public school. The Chamlean School campus is about 4.59 acres, and there are schools in the Glendale Unified School District of similar size and similar enrollment to the enrollment increase that Chamlean is proposing. The applicant did provide a little summary of some of the GUSD schools, their student enrollment, as well as the area of the schools. With the proposed conditions of approval and mitigation measures contained in the mitigated negative declaration, the proposal will not result in any additional traffic on area residential streets. The applicant has prepared a traffic and transportation plan for the proposed increase in enrollment. Part of that plan was a survey, which determined that there was an average of 1.4 students per vehicle. Therefore, adding 200 students would generate approximately 143 additional vehicle trips during the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup times. As a condition of approval-slash-mitigation measure in the mitigated negative declaration, the school will be required to institute a student bus service to and from the school such that the number of trips after enrollment increases will not exceed the total number of existing trips, meaning the trips that are generated now. The school will not be able to exceed the 500 student enrollment until what is called a traffic control plan is approved by both the Public Works and the Community Development Director is approved. And that traffic control plan would need to delineate the number of buses, the bus stop locations, and routes. And then further, to ensure compliance with this, at minimum, annual surveys are required that also delineate where the routes are, the number of students on each route, and the locations. The parking reduction permit application seeks to amend the condition, like the other two, the variance and the -- I'm sorry, the use variance and the standards variance, amend the condition capping enrollment at 500 students. The proposed increase in enrollment does not require additional students unless this increase is accompanied by additional building area. So our zoning code requirement, parking requirements for schools are based on building area and not student count. There is no additional building area proposed. The parking reduction permit approved for the gymnasium several years ago permitted -- permitted 61 onsite parking spaces, and a condition of approval-slash-mitigation measure on that project required that when events such as graduations, opening ceremonies, or sports tournaments are scheduled, a parking attendant is required to direct cars to the large eastern parking area on the school campus and over a temporary parking area over the school playground. So that condition of approval-slash-mitigation measure dealt with the parking reduction that was permitted, that was approved for construction of the gymnasium. A mitigation measure, or I'm sorry, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed increase in student enrollment, the current application, and was made available for a 20-day public comment, public review period, which ends today. There were three mitigation measures contained in the neg deck. The one I just discussed, the parking attendant directing cars to the rear parking lot. In addition, two more mitigation measures were attached to the mitigated negative declaration. The first, providing a bus service for the increase in enrollment, such that no additional vehicle trips are created by this enrollment. And then the second mitigation measure were -- was the provision for at least annual surveys with the stipulation that the Director of Community Development could require surveys more frequently if it felt it was needed. Planning staff is recommending approval of the requested use variance, standard variances, and parking reduction permits, or the modification of the enrollment cap condition with the conditions contained in the staff report. And then I do want to make one modification. If you look at condition 19.
That's the first PVAR.
They're actually -- they're --
Behind the motions.
It's in the motions, actually. You're right. Condition 19 should read, "Access to Second Avenue shall be limited to maintenance vehicles." Give me a wait until you all are there.
So take out the --
Take out the phrase, "And parking for occasional special events after school hours should be stricken." Striking that portion of the condition will make it consistent with the condition that the city council approved when they approved the variance application on appeal.
Could you tell me exactly how it's modified now?
Sure. It should read.
Take out everything after "and."
Right. "Access to Second Avenue shall be limited to maintenance vehicles." And that condition should be modified in both the motion for the variances and the parking That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Kiesel?
Madam Chair, question. I know you referred to one of the conditions having buses. It doesn't really say how many buses are being proposed. And also, is there an existing bus program now that they've tried to initiate in the past? How successful was it? You know, that may be answered by the applicant. I just want to know if this has been tried, that we're proposing something, you know, is it working, is it not working? So what's your insight on that?
Sure. I don't believe at this time there is a bus service. I believe at some point previously, there was a, like a shuttle, that the drop-off point or the point at which the shuttle started was further south on Lowell, about a quarter mile, a half mile. I think the applicant is better informed in terms of where exactly it was and, you know, the logistics of that. In the current condition and mitigation measure, we don't stipulate the number of buses or the bus locations because, number one, that could change periodically as enrollment changes, and the school and the city want some flexibility to change with that. And to, it may be most functional to have two smaller buses or three smaller buses that pick up students from various locations rather than one large shuttle that everybody comes to that then goes up.
But should we make some sort of a reference as to, you know, you have 200 students that's being increased, you know, as some sort of a guideline? I mean, maybe applicant, you know, elaborate on that a little bit more, and also on the history of the busing, you know, at Chamlean.
There is a stipulation that before they can increase enrollment, they need to get the traffic control plan approved by the Public Works Department or Public Works Director, the Community Development Director.
Does that go through TPC also? Transportation?
No, no. I mean, it's just, it's director, both directors.
And also, I have a question on the condition 19. I know you asked to strike the second sentence.
Right.
But that was something that I called you about this afternoon. You know, I guess any school that's in Glendale or in any other places, the residents in then, you know, around school do have to put up with the traffic during the drop-off times, pickup times. And that's the nature of the residents around school, so. But I noticed, I drove around Second Avenue, a very quiet street, but I did notice that there was a pretty nice, the back door entrance, so I wanted to explore the possibility, you know, why is the front of those traffic being borne by people on community and what's the other circular street there?
Abella.
Abella, yeah.
Community.
And Lowell. So, you know.
Aldura, Mayfield.
Right. So, you know, that may be something that I know that the applicant has not looked into it, and neither did our staff, but that might be something that, you know, I'd like to see it explored. I know I may be opening up a kettle of worms here, and maybe people from Second Avenue has some slingshots ready for me, but that might be something that I want to look at as a possible step.
Okay.
That's a question I had too, Mrs. Chair. I mean, I've driven it, looked at it, and I saw a closed gate and newly asphalted driveway, and I said to myself, "What is this for?" And I understand. Now, yeah, it may, in fact, one of the letters that we got today was alluding to the fact that why is it that Second Avenue is being closed off? Perhaps it could be used as a pedestrian.
Access.
Access and outlet, so folks can also park on Boston and use that street, walk the kids up. And, you know, it sounded interesting, so I'd like to get some information about that background. Why is it, and there may be a very good reason why you've closed it, but I'd like to know why.
I do want to say one more thing, just to make sure that everybody knows. You all did receive a number of emails and letters regarding the project. In addition, I spoke with someone last week on the telephone who expressed concern with the project, and just wanted to --
And what was the concern?
Her concern, she, I believe, lived on Abella. She didn't tell me her name. Her concern was traffic on Abella, and she's experienced some random, like, uh, not trying to --
Outbursts of joy?
Well, not violent, but, what am I trying to say?
Aggressive behavior?
Acts of, of, of.
Disrespect?
Disrespect, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I was thinking of another word, and I just couldn't think of it. But, yeah, and so she expressed that to me. She didn't want to tell me her name. She said she wasn't coming to the meeting, and I told her I would relay that to you.
Thank you.
Plenty of letters to that.
We did.
Are all the letters that we have in front of us ones we've already received via email, or are they all new?
Those are all new since you received your packets, so.
There was an email sent earlier today.
Today, there was an email sent out.
With 25 letters.
I think that's what this says.
Oh, okay.
And this.
Yeah, everything, that's what he's referring to.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Roger?
No, I think I'd like to hear applicant.
Has everybody had a chance to read their letters? Jill, have a chance?
I have.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have, our applicant has a total of 15 minutes between yourself and all your other speakers, and our applicant is Mr. Rodney Khan.
Thank you very much, Chair, Commissioners, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located on Brand Boulevard here in the city of Glendale. And the way we were hoping to break up this presentation was you'd have a limited dose of me, and then we'll turn it over to Jono to talk a little bit about traffic, his surveys, and the overall traffic plan. And Commissioner Lee, before I begin, we will address your questions as part of our The Chamlean Armenian School, it's an excellent educational institution in our city. It is a professionally-run school with dedicated parents, teachers, and administrators. It is a very desirable school to educate our children at. And there is a need, a need to increase the number of children, as you've heard from Mr. Kiesel. The additional children will be accommodated by the existing classrooms. There's no increase of building area required. Currently on the site, there are a total of 30 classrooms, 24 of which are taken by the students at any one time. Also, the existing classroom sizes. Currently, the average classroom size is 20 children. We will increase that to 25, which is consistent with elementary school classroom sizes in the Glendale Unified School District. If needed, we also have the ability to modify and/or remodel what is a very large library and parents' auxiliary meeting area to introduce four additional classrooms and still have a very functional library and a very functional meeting area. The infrastructure for these additional students already exists. Little bit of history, and it was mentioned that in 1960, this was originally Lowell Elementary School. In 1983, the Glendale Unified School District sold it to Chamlean Armenian School. The difference now is it's a private school. It's not a public school anymore. The public school would require no public hearings. The public school would simply add the additional children. We would have no discussions. We would have no outreach. None of this would be taking place. I gathered information, and I presented it to you, from the California Department of Education and the Glendale Unified School District. And I don't know if you have that in your staff reports or not, or if staff has given that to you. The purpose that I did that for, the acreage or land area, and let me be very clear, the Glendale Unified School District, the acreages, and the student populations, very, very wide differences. So you can't say, "What is the average, what's the average-sized student classroom in terms of the square footage? What's the average-sized campus? What's the average-sized student population?" What I wanted to do was show you that what we are proposing is both reasonable and sustainable, and that's why I showed you the information. And that information basically calls out a number of other schools in the Glendale Unified School District, what their acreage is, what their number of students are, and we are very comparable to those schools that I've called out. Pick-up and drop-off, that's always an exciting thing to talk about. We spoke about it in the past. Pick-up and drop-off is what I classify as organized chaos, and that's at every school, private, public school, it doesn't matter. When you drop off the kids and you pick them up, it's very difficult to control everyone at all times. Chamlean does the best job of any Glendale school with this organized chaos. Are there issues? Yes. Have they improved them? Yes. Can they continue to improve them? Yes. But they already do an excellent job. We hired Jono Bogdanian. He is a registered professional traffic engineer. And what else about Jono? He is very familiar with the school. He's very familiar with this neighborhood, and he's very familiar with traffic in the city of Glendale. Jono did traffic surveys. He did counts. He did a traffic and transportation plan, and this information will be presented to you in a minute or two. We worked closely with your staff, not just your planning staff, but with traffic staff, with the police, with a number of different agencies in the city of Glendale before we submitted these applications. Your city staff, your city professionals are recommending approval of this request. Why? Why would they recommend approval? I'll tell you why. It's in the analysis in your staff report. Because the buildings and the classrooms are already there and could handle the increase in student enrollment. Because no additional parking is required. Because any additional traffic as a result of this increase can be accommodated and addressed. Because the increase in enrollment is reasonable. And in my opinion, it simply makes common sense. We agree with your city staff and their findings. We agree with their recommendations. I'll conclude my part of the presentation. I'd like to invite Jono up. Both of us will be available to answer questions after Jono's presentation. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Jono Bogdanian, JB Associates. I prepared the traffic analysis for the Chamlean School, and I have a slide presentation. Would I like to do, go through them and finish them? And then I would like to answer the questions that was addressed by Commissioner Lee, if you don't mind. Okay. Let me have this slide. The Chamlean School, similar to many other schools, essentially, the school begins in the morning, 8:30, and it ends at 2:45. They have staggered the hours between the classes from 1 to 3rd grade and 4 to 8th grade. Most of the drop-off, pickup activity begins at, in the morning, at 7:15. In the afternoon, the pickup starts at 2:30. The peak time, there is a peak half hour, it's very common at every school in Glendale, is about a half-hour period where all the parents, pretty much, they all arrive. Either in the morning, they're dropping off, or in the afternoon, they basically come to pick up. Next, please. This slide shows the Chamlean School, Abella to the south, Foothill Boulevard to the north. And the pickup-dropoff activity occurs in the circular driveway, which is, again, very unique in terms of, no other school has a two-lane driveway that provides pickup-dropoff. Most of the other public schools have the pickup-dropoff activity on the street itself. Many of the schools with assistance from the city, they put in cones in the street in order to try to manage that as the best they can. Next slide, please. And this one, this slide actually shows the drive-through lanes in the morning. Parents, because of the time restrictions we have put in place, most of the traffic that has to come into the school, they have to go northbound on Lowell Street. There are no, there's turn restrictions to make southbound left turns into the driveway or left turns out of the driveway to go southbound on Lowell. So essentially, as traffic in the morning comes in, enters the school, they go into two lanes. There's about 18 to 20 vehicle capacity for the two driveways. As the traffic comes out, they drop off the kids. There are two security guards in the driveway to help the parents, the kids, to get into the gates, and then the vehicles drive out, make a right turn, and they go north toward Foothill Boulevard. There is some, also, activity occurs as a result of parents that are dropping their kids, they park in the Albertson Market to the north, and then they walk their kids to come into the driveway. There's also some of the parents, as much as -- There's also some of the parents, as much as we don't like it, that they park on Abella, they parked on, further south on Community, and they walk their kids. There's a crossing guard at Abella that the city has put in just to help facilitate the crossing at that intersection because it's not controlled, only a stop sign on Abella. Next slide. Okay, we did a survey, four-day survey, just to see what the pickup/drop-off activity is. How many students are actually, how many vehicles are coming into the school in the morning? How many are coming in the afternoon? And how many students are in each vehicle? Essentially, we can go through the table, but on the average, in the mornings, we have 342 vehicles that we counted. This is, every single car that came into the driveway, we counted. We saw how many kids are in the car. Also, we counted the parents who were actually walking their kid into the school, if they were parking at Abella, or they parked in the market, in the Albertson. We counted the parent as a car and the kids as their, you know, two passengers on the vehicle. So on the average, we found 342 cars are coming in the morning, and in the afternoon is about 309. That's an average of the four days that we did. So essentially, it's a 1.4 students per car in the morning, almost 1.5 in the afternoon. So the reason we did that, we wanted to see if we, if the school added 200 more students using that same ratio, how many more students' trips will be added to the school and how can we mitigate that? Because this is one of the first things that I mentioned to the school when I was retained. I said, "We cannot just add any more students to the trips that are going to and from the school. Either we have to bus and we have to do some kind of a carpool program. Otherwise, I know the neighborhood very well. There's nobody is going to accept that kind of additional trips that may occur." Next slide, please. So essentially, taking that ratio of 200 vehicles, if we were to add 200 students, it adds about 143 cars or trips in the morning, 143 in the afternoon. So what I did is I used the higher number of vehicles arriving at the school, the 342, which is in the morning, compared to 309 in the afternoon. I added 157 trips that would be added, 143 that is added. So we're talking about 200, 500 total trips that would be generated if 200 additional students was added in addition to the existing student. And then I just used 220. I added another 20 on top of the 200 enrollment potential. And using the 1.4 ratio, essentially, we end up, if we did the carpooling, or not a carpooling, basically a busing program, we should be able to end up with the same number of trips that we currently have generated by the current enrollment of 500 students. So the idea is to at least keep it the way it is today. If not, potentially reduce that even further. Next slide, please. Now, how this is possible, again, based on the city's approval, once the school reaches 500 students and it wants to go over that, all new students, any new student that gets enrolled in the school, they would have to sign a contract that they have to be part of a busing program. They will not be able to drive, you know, parents cannot drive their kids to the school unless they're part of the busing program or in addition to a carpool program that can be added as part of that condition. Buses will be provided free. That was one of the reasons, Commissioner Lee, I think, in the past, there was a charge for the buses, or the buses were not convenient, the location, the parking was an issue. So that's why the participation was low, based on my knowledge. The Principal Modellian is here, can elaborate on that. But generally, I think, free of charge, we think that not only 200 students, if they're all maximum enrolled in the school, that they would be reducing those trips. We believe that there is about 300 students in south of Glendale, where most of the enrollment of the school comes, that if you provide free buses, the existing parents would also take advantage of the bus and therefore reduce the trips further. As mentioned by staff, we would have to put together a transportation plan. That transportation plan will include traffic counts that we would have to do on an annual basis. We can establish a threshold of how many trips that would be, what's the basis to begin with? How many students will be added? It will be incremental. Mr. Modellian can talk about that as far as how many more, how many students, like the day the city gives approval, I don't think 200 students will be added to the enrollment. It will be incremental. So if 50 students get added, we can add two shuttles that would be using to transport the students to and from the school from a satellite location. Next, please. The satellite location that we came up with, based on the ZIP codes, there's about 300 students population currently enrolled that are in a number of ZIP codes in this area of the Armenian, St. Mary's Armenian Church. It has a parking lot with about 120 parking spaces. A bus can enter this in the morning. I'm just giving you a quick idea of how this will work. Bus will enter and park in the school parking lot in the morning. There's no activities by the church. The church and the school are associated, so they will be coordinated in terms of any event whatsoever, even if it happens in the morning or in the afternoon, that they will not interrupt the pickup and the drop-off activity. So parents will come in, drop their kids in the parking lot. There will be a coordinator, there will be a teacher on the bus who will take the kids on the bus, and the buses will leave, go toward St. Mary, go to Shamiyan School. Next slide, please. And this would be the general route. It's about 11 miles, 15 minutes or plus or minus, depending on traffic and any congestion at the freeway ramps. This will be route going to the Shamiyan School. On the return, when they get to, when they get to the Shamiyan School, please, next slide. This would be, this is a bus zone right in between the two driveways of the school. There was a bus zone here, and when the buses were no longer there, I was part of my involvement with the school. We added some parking on the streets, so some of the parking drop-off activity right now occurs in this curve. But the buses will be able to, coming up on Lowell, in the morning, when they drop off the kids, there will again be security guards and parent, not parents, but coordinators, will take the kids off the bus, take them inside the school, into the gate. On the return in the afternoon, again, similar to what they do today, they will gather all the kids, bring them into buses that will be waiting, and then the bus will leave, go back to St. Mary's Church, drop off the kids at that location. Parents will be parked, waiting for the kids to arrive, and that would be the extent of it. Now, this doesn't mean that if there is other groups of kids that are in other parts of the city, which they cannot, it doesn't make sense for them to go to St. Mary's Church because it will be a longer distance, that smaller shuttles cannot be designed in order to pick up those kids from satellite locations and bring them that. That's part of our traffic or transportation management plan that we will be submitting to the city, should the project get approved. Okay, next. That's my, extent of my presentation. If you wish, I can address those two questions that you had raised. I think the previous bus issue I addressed because how that was worked. The second part is the access to Second Street. As far, a number of years ago, this issue came up at the Transportation Parking Commission as far as can the Second Street be open only during the PM peak hour, in other words, the afternoon peak hour? And it did receive a very strong resistance from the Second Street residents, that they didn't want to have that traffic to go to the Second Street. The original plan was that, because the school, if Roger, could you put the slide back in? The second slide, please. The school, as you enter the school into the driveway, there is a roadway, what I call them mostly, of an alleyway. Third slide, there is a close-up, please. One more, please. Okay, there. Basically, at this point, you know, you can go right behind the buildings to go to the parking lot, teacher parking lot. And the idea was that if parents come in and they actually go into that alley one-way, it's a one-way, it's a narrow street, go into the, do the pickup and drop, basically do the drop-off in the afternoon. They go into that parking lot, park their vehicles, students will go and get picked up by the parents, and they will only exit onto Second Street and go to Boston and go north or south. That was the idea. That was one of the ideas. Another idea was essentially, like you said, if you can park on Boston and not actually go into Second Street, because it's a small cul-de-sac, only a few residents who live there, that the parents can just walk to, from the rear gate, and then go into the school and come back. Again, that, this whole idea was explored at the time, but it was a, it became a resistance from the Second Street resident. Although, if you think about it, it will reduce the load. It's not fair to Lowell residents that they have to wait to see a queue of cars parked on Lowell in the afternoon, especially when it backs up, until the bell rings and the kids are being picked up. So you can essentially distribute the traffic, like you said, in that neighborhood. Unfortunately, most of the schools in Glendale don't have that luxury, that it's only one lane that you can pick up and drop off. But it was explored, and it could be an option if we need to explore it further.
Mr. Lee has a question.
Just a comment. I think one of your, when you're explaining that drive-through in front of the school, that the cars are allowed to make, you say, left turn on Lowell as you exit? No, only the right turn?
Only right turn.
Okay. And then you propose that the bus is, I guess, parked in front of, I guess...
Between the two driveways.
Yeah, between the two driveways. Doesn't that also, you know, hinder or, I guess, get in the way of, you know, cars moving, the flow of the cars because of the kids, you know, getting off the bus, you know, they have to cross, you know, the driveways? So I guess what I'm trying to say is that instead of having it along there, either before or after the driveway, circular driveway?
The, that's, the before will be difficult because it will be in front of the residential location. After is also an option because there's a public storage here. There is some parking available. Honestly, we haven't really explored. That would be something we would like to work with the city's traffic engineer to see what would be the best option in terms of. But the idea would be, because the students will be let off in the sidewalk, that would be idea, and there will be additional coordinators or security would be required as part of this plan, because you want to make sure that they cross. Right now, students do cross this lane if their parents are parked at Albertson and then, so there is some interruption, but the vehicles are going very, very slow. But that would be an option to explore north of the driveway as a bus stop, so you can still maintain that drop-off area for the passenger cars that they do right now.
Mr. Storian.
What is the time that the bus will be picking up from the St. Mary's Church to make it to school in time?
It will be based on the bell time. So we would have to time the bus so that there is adequate time. I said approximately 15 minutes so that the bus leaves, the parents arrive on time so that the kids can get onto the bus and have adequate time to travel. In the morning, the bell, first one starts at 8:00, so we would start probably about 7:40, the latest where the bus...
So just one bus from St. Mary's?
It could be multiple buses. As I said, if you were to estimate, worst case of 200 students that you want to do, you would have to put in multiple buses. It could be 45 passenger buses, or if it's a smaller number, it would be less, on a cutaway-sized buses.
And how about new students who don't live down there but are required to take a bus there to the school? But they live up north. Where, how, how do you reconcile that?
Those students would have to be in a carpool, unless we have a group of them that is enough to form a shuttle, a small van, in order to do that. And again, that's part of the logistics of this, that we would put in the plan to make sure that even if it's one or two students, spread north of Foothill Boulevard, you know, to the east or west, which there are some students and there will be some new ones, that they would either have to participate with a parent that does carpooling, existing parent, or form a carpool in order to do that. Otherwise, we will not, the school will not allow them to enroll.
And how do you verify the new students, that they're going to be part of the system or they're carpooling or not driving alone?
Last year, the school actually did a trial of a carpool program. It was on a, they give an incentive to the students, to the parents. Whoever participated in a carpool program, thank you, they would get a $50, let's say, reduction in their tuition. And they had a waiting list, and 25, based on the budget, they had available 25 parents actually did. So what the school did is that they know there have to be two separate families in a carpool. They had a sign, special sign made, that vehicle number one is supposed to have four students, because there are two, let's say, families together, one parent is driving. And as they would enter the driveway, the security guard had a list of all the carpoolers. They will check that those, that vehicle number one had this many students. And it was very effective because the school had to verify in order to give them the tuition reduction. One parent supposedly didn't comply, and they were not able to receive the incentive, but the 24 parents...
There's someone on the site who verifies?
Exactly.
Is that program still happening?
Not at this moment, no. It was a budgetary, they had a certain budget, they wanted to explore that idea. Just to go further, for the, for the busing, a teacher or a coordinator will be on the bus, and it will have a log of how many students, which students have to be on that. They will basically, like you do a class roll call, you do a roll call in the bus, make sure that students are on the bus. If they're not, there will be, there will be provisions in the contract that will not allow that student to continue.
And how, when, when that program happened, how many people actually used it, took advantage of it?
20 families did.
20 families?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Lee.
To follow up Commissioner Storian's comments on this success of your carpool program, you know, if it was successful, why not continue to implement that and provide that option here, maybe as a part of this also, you know, conditions that, to elevate and to help this increase the number of, 20 families with four, that's 80 people. So it sounds like, I mean, it was a wonderful, successful program.
I think in terms of the financial incentive, I cannot speak to that as far as Mr. Modellian probably will address that, but they had a budget that wanted to explore that idea, see how the parents will be willing to do it. And they were willing to do it, and they did it, and there were more parents, my understanding, that wanted to participate, but there wasn't enough budget. With the expansion, technically, it will provide additional budget for the, for the school, not only to provide free buses for the transportation of the majority of the students, but also provide the incentives for a reduction in the trips for existing parents, because, you know, you cannot force the existing parents that are enrolled to do carpooling mandatory or what you could do with the new students.
Has there been a study to find out how close or within a mile radius do families live who go to Shamiyan? And the reason I'm asking is to see if there's ways to encourage people to walk their kids to school also?
I don't think there has been one, but the school has addresses of all the parents who live there in that close proximity, and we can obviously evaluate that. One of the issues that happens is when the parents are parking on the local streets in Abella especially, it causes problems for the, for the parents. And that's something that happens on every school in Glendale. And that's, that becomes an issue. It's a policy issue. Would you allow it to park on residential street and then walk, like you said? Because we've dealt with the schools in Glendale all the time. We encourage, actually, it says, don't, not everybody should pull in front of the school to park their car and drop their kid. Why don't you, it's healthy to walk four or five blocks, park away, and then walk your kid. But then that causes other parking issues on the neighborhood. So you just have to find a balance and see what's the best way to address that issue.
Mr. Storian.
Right. Did I hear you correctly, Mr. Bagdanian? You count the walking parent as a car?
I did, because I know, based on our observation, we had three, four people that were doing the counts, that parents would go to Albertson Market, and they parked there, and then they would walk their kid down to, to the school. They'd go to Foothill, cross Foothill Street, and then come down on the east side of Lowell. We counted them because I wanted to truly know what the school, again, it's a trip, somehow it was going toward the school, so I didn't want to miss that.
Yeah, but some could also be coming from their house. You don't know that 100%.
Yeah.
Unless you follow each, each one.
Exactly. But we assume that to be on the conservative side, to make sure that that's what. So if I, we saw a parent with two kids that was walking into the driveway, we counted that as one car and two kids, to be on the...
So a parent with two kids is how many cars?
One car.
It's one car?
One car.
A kid with two parents is how many cars?
A kid with two parents? One car. If they're not...
I'm feeling as if this is the, you know, I don't know if you folks know anything about the truth table in logic, when A and B, and then A plus B is, that's very odd that I've...
I didn't, we didn't really see like two parents. If there were two parents, there are, there could be two... If there were two parents, there are, there could be two parents with two kids that are walking, they're two different families. So most of them, as I said, majority, I would say 99%.
But you don't know for a fact if these parents are walking from their homes or they're parking Albertson's? Or have you actually put somebody in Albertson's and have counted how many?
We, our count did not go have somebody at the Albertson's, but that was the actual, based on what I know in the school experiences this, and the parents that I've talked to, they park at Albertson's because it's convenient. If they're coming from the north, they cannot make a left turn into the driveway. So they just go to Albertson's, they park their car, walk their kid and go back up, maybe buy some milk on the way.
I think the answer, we don't for sure know, but he took the conservative path, which was to count all of them as car trips.
So basically, what you're telling me is anybody that was walking down here Lowell, you assumed that they're parking Albertson's?
Yes. I also want to make sure that, also, it's clear that during the day, if you look at the counts, we had somewhere about 340 or 50 students that we counted, 450 or so students that we counted. In the afternoon, you'll have kids that stay over because of tutoring, because of programs and so on and so forth. And again, some extra trips does occur after 4:30. I don't want to make sure that you understand that, that 300 is not absolute. There every day when we counted, there are some kids, for a variety of reasons, they stay at the school. They still get picked up at the different time of the, later on after 4:30. But our focus was at that one time where everybody comes in in the afternoon or everybody comes in in the morning.
And out of the people who you assume park at Bonds and walk over, how many, does that count? How many car trips is that?
I have to go back to my notes. I have the survey sheets. I honestly don't have that number with me, but I don't think there's a lot.
Like a dozen?
Probably about 15 to 20 cars, I would say is coming from that.
So those numbers you showed us, about 15, 20 are?
That should be a fairly close number.
And then as far as the new budget from the new enrollment, is there a portion of it dedicated for encouraging carpooling?
I'm going to have to defer that. Yes, the answer is yes. The budget will include providing free bus service, depending on the number of buses, whatever that is, and provide some form of an incentive that I think should be targeted toward existing parents so that not only you take care of the new trips, but you also reduce the existing.
Do you have an amount?
I think that $50, again, not to speak for the, $50 was a start. I can't speak for...
$50 per family was...
You'd have to come up to the mic.
Well, and we do have...
I'm sorry.
If you'll introduce yourself, please. You're Mr. Medalian?
My name is Vaskeen Medalian. I'm the principal of Shamilan.
Thank you.
Okay, just to answer that particular question, last year, we allocated $50 per family discount. And as Janu was describing, we tried it on a trial basis just to see if the mechanics is working, and it gave good results. And to address Mr. Lee's question, we hadn't allocated any budget at the start of the year, but in the middle of the year, we allocated certain amount of money just to see if it works or not, and it did. Now, in this coming year, we will allocate more budget if obviously everything is approved.
So if it does get approved, you are stating that you will reinstate this program?
Absolutely.
The $50?
Absolutely. Well, 50, perhaps more, I don't know. It really depends on what kind of enrollment we have because that really is a function. The budget is a function of the enrollment.
And that's $50 per month?
Last year it was, okay? We don't think it's going to be less than that, if anything, perhaps more, just to give them the incentive.
And open to as many people?
Any people, anybody, okay? As Mr. Medalian was describing, the busing program as well as the carpool incentive will not be limited only to the students who come after the 500 mark. It will be open to anybody. The more, the merrier, basically. However, it will be mandatory for all students who register after the 500.
I have two last questions. One, the new enrollment, do you expect to have that right away, 200 people?
It's still continuing, so we don't know at this point. We haven't hit the 500 number yet, but we have a long waiting list because the continuing students are still registering.
So over a year, two years, or you have no idea absolutely how long it'll take to get to the 700?
At this point, it's a little hard to say, but we know that it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time.
And you have no expectation?
I haven't done a study as such, okay? I haven't done some kind of a statistical analysis or anything like that, but we do anticipate, based on the past experience, okay, that every year, there's going to be something like 5 to 10% increase on the waiting list.
My last question is, in the letters, there were a lot of complaints about double parking, people double parking along the neighborhood. The surrounding neighborhood, people were complaining about that. Is the people who are onsite staffing for the school, is there any attempt to make sure things like that are mitigated to people?
Absolutely. As far as I know, as far as I know, except for now, when we're having some construction there, and everybody is basically parking either at Albertson's or at the church across the street, and we have some kind of an understanding. As far as I know, nobody is parking in the side streets, to my knowledge. Everybody's parking either at Albertson's or at the church, and I personally go sometimes personally and check and see because we have parking permits and make sure everybody's parking there. But there could be some anecdotal situations, I don't know.
That was your last question you said. Now, Mr. Lee?
Thank you. Actually, it's a follow-up question again. You said you're carefully forecasting 5% increase, but you also said there was a waiting list.
There is a waiting list.
Yeah, that number, you can tell us what that is.
Right now, as of now, we have something like 45 people on the waiting list.
Forty-five.
What I was saying to Mr. Storian was that if we look back during the past eight or 10 years, okay, that we've had this waiting list, there's a constant increase, anything from 5 to 10% on the waiting list number. So if it was 30 students, let's say, another three to six, 33, 36 students.
So the 5% was not on the entire student body, but on the waiting list?
No, 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 on the waiting list. On the waiting list. So there's been a constant increase on the waiting list, okay? With a few peaks and valleys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will be calling you back in a minute. Mr. Medalian, I do have one question, and I'd just like you to confirm to the commissioners here that as a parent of children who've gone to the school, you probably know all of the parking tricks, correct?
Okay.
Just because I think that your indication of counting the walking folks from Albertson's and the other streets, you are really intimately aware with the kind of traffic patterns there.
Yes, I do. And I would also say that there is really no excuse for the parents, that there is a nice pickup-drop-off activity that, of course, in this school, I think, as I said, it was unique, it is unique. For them to park on a A bella or any other streets, they're going to have to just wait their turn to get in and out. And that is, unfortunately, it's very hard, they can mention, I think it's a managed chaos that, you know, people take advantage. They're running late, they don't want to get in the queue, they're running late to work, and obviously, they will pull into in front of the driveway, maybe drop the kid and, you know, walk to the school. It's, in my opinion, is unacceptable. So some parking restrictions could be implemented to mitigate that.
I appreciate the study that you did for the vehicular traffic. I would also appreciate if this is approved, that there's a pedestrian circulation requirement. I'm very concerned about the photo you showed that has the bus stop that would have children crossing in that turnaround, and they are children, and they are exuberant, and I would be very, very heartbroken if anything happened. So that would certainly be something that I would expect to go hand in glove with the vehicular requirements.
There are, I have recommended to school, regardless of this gets approved or not, a number of improvements in terms of assigning and striping in the driveway, how to manage the pedestrians, because I agree with you that all you need to parent to back up, and we've had that problems everywhere. And so absolutely restriping the driveway, so it's putting more delineator, so cars are all forced to stay in their lane and they take turns as they exit. Additional security or additional coordinator at the driveway so that you can hold on the traffic like a crossing guard, let the kids cross and then let the cars go. So those are recommendations, and I believe school will take into action regardless of what actions takes place on this, for their own safety of their kids.
Thank you. I think Mr. Storian has a question for you.
I do. The bus zone, that yellow PowerPoint part in front of the driveway, how many buses can actually park there, full-size buses?
There is about 160 feet in between the two driveways, and if you took a typical school bus, it's about 40 feet wide. So you could, to be safe, you could put in three because you need to have some distance among them so that the bus can pull out and go up northbound. The street is wide enough, it's 21 feet, so you have almost a 10-foot parking lane, although a bus is only eight and a half feet wide. So by the time it pulls to the curb, you will have still enough width for the bus to safely park at the curb and have a travel lane next to the bus to be able to go through.
And that's a 40-foot?
That's a 40-foot, long bus.
Not width, length.
That's right.
And now, the 40-foot-long buses, are they gasoline-operated, diesel-operated, or are there clean fuel available in those?
These days, there's a variety of buses. There are CNG buses, there's propane buses, there are some, and gasoline-operated buses. It all depends on the number of buses that you're looking to get and the size, and that would determine what's available. You have to contract this out to a contractor. But there are many contractors that do school bus service, so it should be able to accommodate that, whether specifically it's CNG or any other. The more clean fuel, the more expensive these buses are running.
Ah, but cancer is expensive.
Thanks, definitely.
Thank you very much. I have several cards. Mr. Medalian, and everyone will now have three minutes unless you are representing a homeowners association. Mr. Medalian is representing the school, so you also have five minutes.
Yes, it will be much shorter than that. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I've introduced myself already. My name is Vaskeen Medalian. I'm the principal of Shamilan Armenian School, and I've held that position for the past 23 years. During the past two decades, I have witnessed Shamilan's growth as a strong and viable educational institution. Not only has Shamilan offered an excellent educational program to its students, but it has also been a safe and nurturing environment, instilling strong moral and family values. Shamilan thrives to prepare its students to become responsible and productive citizens with a good sense of their heritage and culture. The school has enjoyed an excellent reputation in the community and subsequently has a large number of applicants. It has a long waiting list, which continues to increase consistently every year. Unfortunately, due to the number constraints imposed by our permits, the CUP, we have been turning down several applications, thus depriving many students from getting the quality education of their choice. To remedy this situation, we are applying to increase the enrollment limit and urge you to grant our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Susan Bolan, and she is representing the homeowners association. You also have five minutes.
My name is Susan Bolan. I'm president of the Far North Glendale Homeowners Association. The borders of our association are Lowell, Pennsylvania, Honolulu, and the San Gabriel Mountains. I did send a letter, so I'm not going to go ahead and read the letter again, but I do want to make a couple of points. I do appreciate what Shamilan has done with their parking and trying to work with the community with the traffic situation. But I really need to point out that you can't compare Glendale schools with a private school. And Shamilan in particular is a commuter school. Almost every student comes by vehicle. Other Glendale schools, public schools, a good portion of the students walk to school, bike to school, use other means of transportation. So when they're referencing the acreage, the students, all of that, you need to take that into account. My other big point is I'm actually shocked that we're here because I came to the planning commission when we were discussing the gym. I came to the city council when they overturned the decision of the planning commission. And we were told by the applicant, their representatives, time and time again that they would, A, not open the gate on Second Avenue, and they would not ask for an increase in enrollment. It's documented time and time and time again. I heard the city council say, "We will approve with conditions." And one of the conditions is no increase in enrollment. So I cannot emphasize enough that point. We were promised, the community was promised, no increase in enrollment. So here we are. I ask you tonight, please reject all three requests. You need to honor their requests. I mean, you need to honor the promise made to the community, and I really appreciate your vote against all three requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is this an appropriate time to ask a question, or do we wait at the end, or how do we do this?
If it's a short question, I think we could certainly ask now. Ms. Bolan?
And it's not only for Ms. Bolan, that's all right. I mean, I'm talking about speakers and so forth.
Oh, all right. Just a general question?
I promise you, I won't get personal if that's what you mean.
Glad to hear that. Go ahead, Mr. Storian.
Let's go forward now. I'll ask when time comes, that's okay.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Ms. Marina Menukian?
My name is Marina Menukian. I'm the parent of a current Shamilan student and one who has graduated, and I'm here to speak in favor of approving all three requests. For 39 years, Shamilan has been providing quality education to members of our community. And our communities, Armenian population, has increased over the years. And so to increase the enrollment now would be to serve our community again and provide opportunities to other kids who are on our waitlist and other kids who don't apply because they think they may get on the waitlist, to have an opportunity to have access to this wonderful Armenian education. That's all I have to say. And also, actually, incidentally, I did have one fact to add. We have a security guard, and I don't know if Mr. Khan would actually say this, but we have a security guard on top of the driveway, and there are markings where the kids who get dropped off on the street, where there's three-minute parking or half an hour parking, when they want to cross the driveway into the school, the security guard stops the traffic, waves the kids, and the kids know to wait there. So if the buses were parked on the street, that same security guard would use the same crossing area to direct the kids. That's it. Thank you.
Nina Royal, and are you representing the Seland Tuhanga?
Mr. Portman, Karen Zimmerman is a speaker.
So which of you is going to take the five minutes? Because only one of you, all right. So Nina, you have three minutes. You're next.
My name is Nina Royal. I live at 10110 Samoa Avenue in Tuhanga. I sit on the Lanyz Committee. I'm the safety chairman and the treasurer of the Seland Tuhanga Neighborhood Council. I did not hear in the speech any information regarding the city of Los Angeles. We're your good neighbor. We're there in times of need, and we share in a lot of other areas as community members. Perhaps it's time, maybe, that Shamilan look at having a satellite in other areas of Glendale because it's just impossible to fit the entire Armenian community into that small area. The community is still growing. If in the advent that we have the golf course, Canyon Hills, we also have... If in the advent that we have the golf course, Canyon Hills, we also have land on the Trina Canyon that's looking to change from a convalescent hospital to multi-units, it's going to be a terror trying to get it on and off that freeway. And obviously, that's where most of the students come from, is from this part of Glendale. And what it does to our traffic and pedestrians and et cetera is going to be a nightmare. I don't know how you're going to be able to mitigate that. And like I said, I'm sure it's a wonderful school, but maybe they should look at going satellite. We just cannot accommodate any more traffic. I'm sorry, I know that you really want it and I could tell by just looking at you that you've already made up your mind. I did get a reading body language, I'm sorry, that's what I do. But please consider Los Angeles and the fact that we have to get to work and we have to come back from work. And we are very much interested in the safety of all pedestrians. And as you know, that Lowell Avenue is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Wiseman.
Good evening, Chair Protown Landrigan, planning commissioners, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman from Far North Glendale. I'd like to start off, first of all, by thanking Mr. Kiesel for his assistance with cheerfully and in a timely manner providing information on this case and answering all of my many questions. And I very much appreciate his professionalism and the professionalism of the entire planning department of the city. As I know some of you may recall, because you were present at that meeting, January 2011, at that time you denied the standards and use variances and a parking reduction because you couldn't make the finding that the granting of the variances would not be materially detrimental to the public welfare. This denial of yours, as you well know, was reversed by the city council, as was the design review board denial of the gymnasium design. Now what really concerns me and what I would like to emphasize is that at both the January 2011 Planning Commission meeting and the subsequent appeal to the city council, numerous statements were made by both city staff and the applicant stating in no uncertain terms that there would be no growth or expansion of the school and no increase in student enrollment. Specifically, at the January 2011 Planning Commission hearing, Mr. Kiesel said, and I quote, "The project is an amenity to the existing school and will not increase enrollment." Mr. Kiesel also said, and I quote, "When used during normal school hours, the gym will not generate additional traffic since the project is not proposing any increase in student enrollment." The applicant's representative, Mr. Khan, said, and I quote, "This new facility will not change the number of students currently at the school. It will not change the number of grades being offered." In reference to parking, Mr. Khan also said that no new parking spaces were needed because the number of students would stay the same. At the city council appeal in May of 2011, Mr. Kiesel again said, "The school is not intended to grow or expand." And Mr. Khan said, "There will be no increase in student enrollment." So why are we here when these representations were made to us a couple of years ago to sell this to you and to the city council? I would also briefly note in closing that Mr. Bogdanian and Mr. Midalian, the principal, both spoke at the January 2011 Planning Commission meeting and they spoke about the inability of the school to successfully implement a student shuttle bus program due to lack of parent participation. So if nobody's going to participate voluntarily and only the new students are going to be bused, then we're not taking any additional vehicles off the street, we're only adding buses to the crowding that looks to be there already. I was glad to hear answers to some of the questions and I appreciate Mr. Astorian's question about whether diesel or CNG buses are going to be used because that's a consideration in environmental impacts. And also, finally, will the environmental impacts on traffic in downtown Glendale near St. Mary's be considered? This is two blocks south of the Americana and the Galleria. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Irma Avakian?
My name is Irma Avakian and I'm here as a Shamiyan parent. I just wanted to touch upon some of the positive aspects of the school. Shamiyan has earned a reputation in the community for having high academic standards and promoting social growth in a caring environment. So it's no surprise that many parents want to enroll their kids in the school. I'm a proud parent of a sixth grader and I've watched my son's academic and social growth over a span of six years. I find that the school values academic excellence and demand for the same has been more and more rigorous each year. Aside from academics, there's a strong emphasis on character development whereby students are taught to be respectful to authority, follow school policies, be compassionate and kind to one another. These are all values that are instilled in the students on a day-to-day basis. The school also has a very active athletics department and has extracurricular activities such as drama, dance, robotics, and Spanish classes. Overall, I feel that the school provides the knowledge and tools required to excel in high school, college, and life in general. I would like to see other kids be given the same opportunities for their future that my child has at Shamiyan. Therefore, I urge you to grant our application. Thank you.
Thank you. Alenia Premian? I'm sorry if that's not your name, I'm hoping it is. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner, fellow commissioners. My name is Alenia Premian. I'm a 25-year resident of Glendale. I'm a business owner, practicing attorney in Glendale as well for the last 15 years. I have three kids who have gone through the Shamiyan system. One has graduated already and is in 10th grade. The other two are current enrolled students. The school has provided an incredible nurturing environment for my children. It's like a second home for us. I've been there 10 years and I've seen the school grow academically, just overall as far as inspiring my kids to want to improve and better themselves. As far as nurturing them, they instill great family values. And for me, when I hear that there's other students who are denied that opportunity to go to this amazing school where, you know, there is not only an American but also an Armenian sort of cultural input into their daily activities. So to say no to those kids, I feel like, you know, why my child versus, you know, not those? So if we're able to provide the school, I mean, the community with an opportunity to bring in more kids, I think it's a great thing to do. As far as, you know, why now? You know, obviously, there's an undeniable need to increase enrollment. If we have a waiting list, that means that there's a need in the community, parents who wish to have their children go to Armenian school, get a private education. So I think that's also important to note as well. If I can just pick, like, sort of note on the pickup-drop-off issues. You mentioned parking tricks. After 10 years, I have my own tricks. Yeah, I come late. I just come late. I don't, you know, I don't do it when it's the rush time. I come at 3:45, I park in the front, call my kids out, and I get them. So, you know, those of us who are, have been there veterans, we kind of, you know, kind of know what to do and stagger our pickup. I carpool with other families, you know. I have friends who, you know, they're not as flexible with their work schedule, so I pick up their kids after school. So, I mean, school does an amazing job to encourage that carpooling. And, you know, I've been before here as far as for other issues that the school has brought up and the carpooling has always been there. They always encourage that. As far as the busing, I think that's a great, you know, an alternative. It's a great mitigating option for the new families coming in. As far as the security guards, they're very vocal, as one of the, you know, other parents indicated. The security does, you know, wave them in. They're very vocal if the kids sort of walk into the crossing section without, you know, without him noticing or stopping the cars. So that implementation has been a wonderful addition to this, to school. If I could just make one suggestion and I'll just finish up. I know we don't want to open up second for cars, but perhaps, I don't know if the school has looked into that, maybe the bus can drop off there. And then that's not too encumbrance for the, you know, the families that live there. If there's two or three buses, maybe just dropping off a large number of kids. That's a suggestion that maybe the school can explore instead of just opening up to many cars. Good evening.
Thank you. Allison Wooden?
I don't really have anything more to say than what hasn't already been said. I did, I would just like to point out that this is no longer the 1970s. This is no longer, you know, a small little public school that from my understanding was shut down for low student enrollment. This is 2014. I see this as a school operating as a for-profit business, which is not appropriate for this zoning. If the school were to be treated as any other business in the area, it would probably be shut down as a public nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. Aileen Babayan?
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. My name is Aileen Babayan and I am a resident of the city of Glendale for 38 years. I am also a passionate person who thrives on education. I believe in the institution of learning and what they provide to our young citizens. That is why I devote tremendous amount of volunteer hours at various educational-related committees throughout our community, both public and private. I'm a product of Glendale Unified School District and I have two children who are graduates of Shamiyan. The purpose of Glendale Unified School District, or private school, is the same, to cater to as many students and parents who wish to send their children to whatever school they choose with no hurdles towards education. After all, this is about education. More and more, I have heard about families who want to send their children to Shamiyan but are on a waiting list. Families should not have to face that issue when it comes to sending a child to school. I fear that the waiting list will affect my now-two-year-old nephew and he will not be able to attend. Sad to think that we have to worry about finding him a place to earn his education when we consider Shamiyan to be one of the finest. We hear about increased traffic issues at Shamiyan. I live 100 yards from a GUSD elementary school. Do I face traffic issues daily? Yes. Do I see traffic violations daily? Yes. But not once would I consider to raise an issue in this regard because I know that this is a place of education. Families trying to get their children to school and part of our growing city and life in Glendale. Every school in Glendale deals with traffic issues, period. For some reason, we're all hung up on numbers. That's not what this is about. This is about our community reaching out and understanding that we have grown and we need to consider, with growth comes reconsideration of norms we accepted years prior. As Don't Fail Me Now. The little schoolhouse in the city of over 190,000 citizens no longer works. As a community member, we have a responsibility to meet the needs of our citizens and what is being asked of this commission makes logical sense. Parents and students have a right to a good education wherever they choose in our city. No child should have to wait on a list in hopes that they get into school. Numbers are there to be adjusted, just like rules and laws are there to be reviewed and revised. That is the basis of an evolving society. Please vote. Thank you.
Gunter Hain?
You may correct me when you reach.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not coming here prepared with a big sheet of notes, so I do everything just off the top of my head. And I first have to tell you, my name is Gunter Hain and I live at the very close proximity to the school in the cul-de-sac of Second Avenue. And this provided me with a very good vantage point to see everything that went on during the construction period, which by some miracle apparently didn't cause a serious accident on Second Avenue because many of the multi-axle trucks with heavy equipment sometimes blocked access to every resident on Second Avenue and then finally made it up the improvised driveway into the property with bulldozers, trains, heavy-duty equipment, extra weight loads. So we were very respectful of the dangers that were existing and, but what disturbed us is the driveway that leads into the McHalean School property from Second Avenue was relatively narrow and some vehicles had to have a very tough time getting in there. So after the construction was virtually completed, the driveway was widened and had a different shape so it would make the access to the back of the school property where the auditorium is located much easier. And there was a lot of talk here tonight about traffic in general. And I think that's what we are all concerned about, that Second Avenue will only in an emergency be used for access to the auditorium and not by everyone that may attend functions or bring their children to school. And I encourage every member of the committee to do a tour of the facilities and see what the school has built. A very ambitious building project with, I suppose, projector room, possibly kitchen, and so that discloses certain plans for the future. And those plans are at the back of our mind, very much a concern. So we, I want to go on record to state that I'm very concerned about ever using Second Avenue, which would be dangerous to every property owner and person living on Second Avenue if that would happen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Linda Schatz?
Hello, I am Linda Schatz representing the family home on Second Avenue, 3857. First of all, Mr. Kiesel, I do appreciate your recommendation to delete the section of Condition 19 that says, "And parking for occasional special events after school." Occasional special events is of concern given that it includes, for Condition 18, back-to-school nights, open house events, graduation programs, holiday programs, fundraising events, and now sporting events. And given a beautiful new gym, might that be every week or even every day? Perhaps we can quantify occasional. There's been distinct feeling amongst Second Avenue residents that allowing access from the street has been the intention all along. If Shamiyan gives the student increased approval, certainly they will ask for Second Avenue to be open to alleviate low traffic. Yes, property owners bought near school. They did not anticipate a private school that would continue to expand and expand and that would create horrific traffic in the neighborhood and instead of serving the neighborhood like a public school, has created unacceptable hardships for it. As mentioned, as one of the primary mitigation measures in Condition 23 to offset traffic is to use buses. And yet in 2011, we were told that they tried busing and that they could not get parents to do it. The parents are very protective and they do not want to put their children on a bus. We cannot make them. I'm echoing the use of a sample of comparable schools. It doesn't work here. Shamiyan is a private school and there is a higher percentage driven to school. The neighborhood is discouraged and disheartened. This is creating an atmosphere of distrust between the neighborhood and the city and between the neighborhood and the school. In closing, you, the planning commissioner, supported us last time because you were concerned about the community. I urge you to support us- I urge you to support us again and to deny the use variance as unreasonable and inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Fisk.
I'm moving much slower than I did when they opened the school. There were only five houses on Abella Street at that time. Could I have you pass these up? I have a packet for you that started with the package that I had at your desk, I think, this morning. I brought them in on Monday to be handed out or sent to you folks. My name is Don Fisk. I was with the Glendale Unified School District for 36 years. I was principal at Verdugo Woodlands, principal at Mountain Avenue, director of elementary education, where I supervised 19 principals involved with all 19 elementary schools. I've had a great relationship with Vascon. We've kind of had a communication method where he would keep me alerted to things that were going on, and I was to give him feedback from the community. I didn't keep that going as well as I should have, but we did have a good contact. I also was working closely with Kathy Marcus, who was director of zoning for a number of years, and she was involved when Chamlian was created, and had many meetings with principals before Vascon, and, but she and Vascon had great meetings and great accomplishments and agreements on what should be done. Edith Fuentez followed, and I also met with her and attended the different hearings that were conducted over the years. And when I came to do my first presentation, they gave me 20 minutes to talk, and I think I used all of that, and I'll try to wrap up sooner here. I had poster boards and a lot of things, and I said, "Now, shall I take these home?" And Kathy Marcus said, "No, we have a storage room, and we'll keep those if we ever need them, and they'll be available for you." I didn't ask for them this time, because I had notebooks and files at home in which I kept communications from Kathy and Edith. And so the information I have is based on that rather than just my memory. Being an old man as I am, the doctors often say, "Well, if you were younger, we would do this and that, but because of your age, we won't do that." And so my son had said, "Dad, you're going to get in front of them, and they're going to say, 'Well, what you're talking about are things that were done a long time ago, and they probably don't apply anymore.'" And I said, "No, the Constitution was written many years ago, but it doesn't change just because presidents change. It's firm, and I believe that the things that these ladies agreed to over the years are still firm." And so I just wanted to review with you some of their thoughts. The main points of my presentation, and I'm almost.
And you are out of time, but I will give you a few more minutes if you can do it succinctly.
Kathy Marcus and Edith Fuentez are past directors of planning. They proposed reducing the enrollment if the number of vehicles could not be reduced. So I'm almost saying, you know, maybe the title for this hearing was not to increase enrollment, but rather to decrease the enrollment. And that's, you know, unheard of, but it's the comment that both of the directors of planning recommended. They proposed that if vehicles are not reduced, we reduce enrollment. The school had agreed with the information about number of students who could attend and the grades to be served. They agreed to that, but yet they broke both. When we enrolled 500, they accepted having 500, they enrolled more than 500. Kathy Marcus had to say, "You have to take some of those students out and bring them down to 500." They broke the agreement that they had. They also were told the school goes K through A. We found out that they slipped in some ninth graders. We could tell the difference in the neighborhood by the whistles and the depth of the boys' voices.
Mr. Fisk, you have a few more seconds.
Oh, okay. They developed these agreements, and so I just wanted to let you know that they have said that the previous daily vehicular trap, 258 to 279 miles, I mean cars, in the morning, the amount we're increasing is well above that. Average of 420 students by those car sizes. Well, anyway, I'm wanting to propose the fact that the school really is being proposed for things that are going to give us major trouble in traffic and in parking, and going to Albertson's store sounds like an easy trip. You look at a map, and it's just a short distance, but it's uphill in hot weather and rainy weather. It's a shame to ask parents to dig that distance.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a short break, and so we will be back. We have still some speakers, and can we have a 10-minute break?
Five.
Five? 10. We're never back, and we'll say five, and we'll be back in 10. All right, welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of April 16th. We'll be continuing with public comment. Basam Mays.
Good evening. Hi, Basam Mays. I'm actually a homeowner on Abella Street, 3957 Abella Street, and I live right across from Don's, and I sure hope I won't be his age when we're discussing addition of more students. You know, from hearing things tonight here, I really thought we're here into the discussion of the quality of Chamlian education or not, how good of an education school it is and how academic it is, and that's great, and I'm really happy for that. But sometimes, you know, we outgrow our spaces. When I got married to my wife, we lived in a small little apartment, and we've got children. We went on and lived in a condo, and then we bought a bigger house, and that's how things go on in life. So you've pretty much outgrown your space, and that's good. You're doing really good, I think, but you can't fit all these people into that little space, and you think the community is denying you the cultural or the education of your kids? No, that's a good thing. Maybe it's time to invest into a little bigger real estate property, you know, bigger area, different little area, but you cannot fit all these people in here. And the reason is, you know, two of my daughters were involved in accidents, right? One on Abella Street and the other one right on Lowell, one trying to make a left turn, right into the schools and involved with parents of the schools. My kids are at risk, and I have an 18-year-old daughter and a 21-year-old daughter, and it is hell for them. They're even choosing different times in their college to choose a class not to be at 8 o'clock or 8:30 to leave the house. This is how hectic it is today. And when I read about the 200 extra students, this is like having an accident every day. You're stuck in this thing. There's no parking in any of our spaces to park in when we come in the morning or when we come in the afternoon. It is really, I think it is risky. It is risky for my kids. It is really busy for the street, and it's, so I really oppose this thing, and if I can ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we have Karen Keen-Zimmerman, who will be representing Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council, and so you have five minutes, Karen.
As you mentioned, my name is Karen Keen-Zimmerman. I'm a resident of Los Angeles, but my house has a 91214 mailing address. We're part of that little pocket there, and in fact, our cul-de-sac is within 500 feet of the school. I'm a member of Christina Valley, excuse me, Christina Canada Voice, and also a member of the Land Use Committee of the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council. And I'm going to share with you this evening the letter that was written by our chair, Dean Sheer. The Land Use Committee of the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council has been following the Chalimian Armenian Schools' request for an enrollment increase from 500 to 700 students. This matter was brought to our attention by a number of City of Los Angeles residents who live in proximity to the school on Lowell Avenue. It was placed on a special agenda of the Land Use Committee on April 7, 2014, for discussion and community input. We estimate that over 100 L.A. city families reside west of Lowell, just east of the Cooks Canyon Channel, south of Foothill Boulevard. These L.A. city homeowners are part of the 91214 postal zone. In addition, L.A. families living north of Foothill Boulevard, along Lowell Avenue corridor, and in neighborhoods just west of the City of Glendale are also impacted by Lowell Avenue. The Foothill communities have seen a significant increase in traffic during the last 20 years. Lowell Avenue in particular has been severely impacted by increased traffic volumes because it provides direct access to the 210 freeway. In addition, Lowell Avenue frequently serves as an alternative north-south travel route for Tahunga Canyon Boulevard. Looking beyond our past problems with traffic, as well as the severe current levels, we also have to take into account two large residential projects, one already approved by the City of L.A., Canyon Hills, 223 houses, which were improved in 2005, as well as the Verdugo Hills Golf Course, which has been proposed for a 224-home development. Both projects are located on Latuna Canyon Road, within a mile of Tahunga Canyon Boulevard. Both projects would add substantially to local traffic, including traffic on Lowell Avenue. Motorists seeking to avoid inevitable increased traffic delays on Tahunga Canyon Boulevard would additionally seek out Lowell Avenue as an alternative route. It's important to note that the analysis of traffic and transportation impacts in the CEQA document, the mitigated negative declaration, relies almost entirely on a proposed traffic and transportation plan developed by the applicants' consultant, John Obanadian and Associates. This is a proposed busing plan that attempts to mitigate increased vehicle trips in the area of the school by shuttling in students from nearby locations. As such, it lacks adequate analysis of traffic impacts in the area, does not model impacts, does not account for cumulative traffic impacts, referring to his statements above, does not address traffic and pedestrian safety, and offers no meaningful mitigation. At a minimum, the mitigation monitoring plan for the project should include a mandatory assignment of students to designated shuttle buses accessing the site. As you know, in 2012, the Glendale City Council approved a new gymnasium for Chalimian Armenian School. In granting several variances for the gymnasium, the City Council also stipulated that the school's enrollment be capped at 500 students. Based on what we are hearing from community members, as well as our own observations, we fully support this stipulation and believe it absolutely vital to maintain the enrollment cap at 500 students. And then he goes on to say, "We appreciate the opportunity to share our views." If I might make a reference to what has been brought up as far as what was stipulated two years ago. At that time, the gymnasium was allowed to be 35 feet high, well above the 25 limit for an R1 zone. The floor-area ratio was, ended up to be double what normally would be approved within the campus, and that with only 61 parking spaces, they were still allowed to move the project forward, although with the gymnasium, actually 147 parking spaces were required. The city made significant concessions to approve the gymnasium, and the only thing they asked was that the enrollment remain at 500 students. And I think you have a wonderful school, great quality education. We have no exception with that, but I do agree that I think that you have outgrown the space, and that would just be represented from my own personal view, living in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Arturo Casarian.
Good evening, members of commission. My name is Arturo Casarian. I'm a board member in Chamlian School and also a parent of three kids who graduated the school. We were very happy with the school, and I want to mention that Chamlian School has a high standard, education standard, and excellent academic achievements, and it's not surprising that everyone wants to bring their children to enroll there. So I urge you to approve this application so that we can have the equal opportunity to other kids, so they can bring their, they can come to our school and enjoy the benefits of the excellent academic and athletic achievements that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ian Currie.
Good evening. My name is Ian Currie. I live at 4347 Lowell Avenue. I don't know how many people here are actually residents of Lowell Avenue, but as far as an impact, I'd like to address the actual traffic flow on Lowell. I take exceptions to some of the studies that have been done, because there are spot checks, they do numbers, they use statistics, whatever. Reality is, when we live day in and day out with the volume of traffic that is created by the school, it has become a safety hazard to the point where, as Basim said, my wife has been rear-ended on Lowell Avenue. I have seen two major accidents on Lowell Avenue. It's a major safety issue that needs to be addressed beyond anything of enrollment. It's, was never designed, Lowell Avenue was never designed for the volume of traffic that was, that it's seeing now. Unfortunately, the people that designed the 210 freeway didn't take in consideration the increase in population and traffic flow on a two-lane road. All the other roads in Locker Center are four lanes. Ocean View, Locker Center Avenue, Pennsylvania have four lanes, two up, northbound, southbound. Lowell Avenue has one lane northbound, one lane southbound. Ingress and egress out of our driveway is terrifying. People do not slow down. People are not courteous. It's really a huge safety issue. I fear for my wife, my children. I have three children that have gone, two of them have gone through the Glendale Unified School District. One of them is still in the Glendale Unified School District. One of my children, my eldest son, is disabled, and he has to be picked up every day, and the poor woman that has to pick him up has to deal with this ingress and egress out of our driveway, which is terrifying for her, and I just, I'm just scared to death that something is going to happen. I appreciate the school wanting to offer a quality education. I have no problem with that, but an increase in school population would be detrimental to not only my quality of life, but the quality of life that everybody that lives on Lowell Avenue. And just taking spot checks of traffic doesn't really cover what the real issue is. And as a side note, if the City of Glendale would like to fill in some of their lacking budget, if they assigned a full-time traffic officer to that area, they would be able to fill their coffers with the fines that they would receive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tolar Malak Lakin from the ANC Glendale. So if you were representing the ANC, I will give you five minutes.
I'm not going to take much of your time, but again, my name is Tolar Malakin. I'm executive director of the ANC Glendale Chapter, and I'm here to express my support for the expansion of enrollment for Chamlian Armenian School. I was, you know, as an anecdote, I wasn't a student there, and I don't have kids that go there, but growing up, I know of the quality of education that they have, and I'm actually a resident of Locker Center, and my gym's Footy Athletic Club, right at the bottom of Lowell, and I go most mornings, when I can actually make it, to the gym, and, you know, I do deal with the traffic, much like many of the residents that live around there. But at the same time, I think that with the tentative plans that have been presented by the school, it only seems logical to, you know, to approve something when they have a plan in place that's going to be able to moderate it. That's, you know, on my behalf, but ANC Glendale supports this, and we hope to see that this quality education is provided for more students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Ridell. I'm batting zero today.
Thank you. Committee members, thank you for the opportunity to address this. First of all, I want to say that out of all the people in this room, I probably live closest to the school. My house is right across the street, 4427. When I look out of my home office window, it's right there, so if anybody has a personal experience of what it's like being a neighbor of the school, it's me. And in a lot of ways, Chamlian School is just a great neighbor. In fact, the principal, Vascon, right? He was helpful to me when I went over there and visited. I was taking an Armenian class at PCC to learn more about the beautiful Armenian culture and language, and he pointed to me to some of their website content that helped me kind of get into that entry-level stuff at my level, which is about kindergarten or first grade. So it was a great experience, and I really appreciate that. I have to agree, though, with my neighbors about the impact of increased student enrollment. It is, there are some fundamental differences between a private school and a public school. One, of course, is the fact that it's commuter. We've already addressed that, but also that it's a major artery on a two-lane road, so I want to emphasize that. And the thing that is disturbing as a neighbor in terms of the congestion, I mean, we all have to deal with congestion sometimes, so. have to deal with congestion sometimes, so we have to deal with that, but it has to do with the impact on Lowell Avenue itself. I don't mind hearing the names announced at the end of every school day. I've learned to live with that. What bothers me is the sweet spot out in front of the school. Our attorney friend knows all the secret spots. What she forgot to mention is that to get that spot, you have to park for about 30 to 60 seconds, sometimes longer, waiting for somebody to pull out. While you're doing that, traffic all the way down Lowell Avenue piles up. And when people, especially in the afternoon, when people are in a hurry, that gets them to do some desperate things to try to get home on time, or to try to get where they think they want to go. Also, across the street from the school, if I remember correctly, that's Staff Parking Lot, right? That's leased out from the church. The staff parks in a church across the street. And when they're running late, and presumably the staff is going to have to be adjusted to accommodate the increase in enrollment, they ideally would go up to Foothill Boulevard in a perfect world, and they would cross at the light and come back down. But they're sometimes running late, too, like everybody, all of us are every once in a while. They'll dart across Lowell Avenue. I'm concerned about their safety. I mean, there's obviously, we don't want the congestion, but there are some serious safety issues associated with a commuter school and increased enrollment in that exact area. So maybe there are some other alternatives to accommodate an increase in enrollment. I think it's great we have a really good school like this in our neighborhood, but we've got to find another way of an increased enrollment there to deal with it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to speak... I guess people maybe are tired about hearing about how great Shalimian is. I'm a graduate of Shalimian myself, and I now have two children who attend Shalimian. But I do want to speak to some facts that were presented. Again, one of the neighbors, perhaps it's not hard to imagine why they're here, because it's very common to not want it in your backyard, whether it's a shopping center or a apartment complex. But it's a fact. The school is there, and if the school went away, something else would be there. I don't think, if it was a park, you'd have traffic. If it was a church, there would be traffic. If public storage expanded and went over there, there'll be traffic. So it's a fact of the city growing. In fact, I travel a lot. I've lived in Glendale for most of my life, for over 30 years, and I travel a lot to places where they don't have this problem. Cleveland, Ohio is one. Detroit is another city. These cities are contracting. They're not growing anymore. The point that I'm trying to illustrate is, the city of Glendale, his, has continually expanded. The population, I remember every year that they... Not every year, but when the census happens, they remove the sign and they replace it. When I was a kid, I remember the sign was somewhere in the 100,000 range. Now it's closer to 200,000, and always expanding. The increase that Shalimian is asking for is in line with that expansion. So again, to say that the rest of the Glendale Unified Schools are, you know, children are walking, that's not the case. Let's be honest. If you drive by Wilson, or Verdugo Woodlands, or any other schools, you see tons of schools where the parents are dropping off the children. I have to say, again, with one of the neighbors who said my daughters are scared to leave the house and the traffic and stuff, I drop off my kids once in a while. I work in West LA, so I try not to too often. When I do drop them off, it takes me 10 minutes, because I'm a religious user of Waze Navigation. Takes me 10 minutes from my door up Royal and above Glendale College area to Shalimian. And in fact, it takes me about 1 minute 27 seconds from the Foothill Athletic Club to do the drop-off there. So to make that ingress egress out of Lowell, Lowell is never going to become a quiet street. It's never going to become a cul-de-sac. It's a major exit off the 210 freeway. In fact, the 210 freeway, if you want to put a stop to the traffic, you'd have to take away that exit. I mean, that's never going to happen. That is a major artery for Locker Center, for Glendale, and the school is just one component. In fact, the school implements everything. I've never seen such a school that has two security guards so diligent. There's a crossing guard there, and my wife even gives me warnings, you know, "Don't park here, don't block here." When we took our kids there, there were a set of rules, and the school is very, very strict, and the security guards are even stricter. There is no... Sure, people can bend the rules, but for the most part, people are respectful. People understand that this is a residential neighborhood. And the rest of the day, in fact, it's a good thing that it's a school there and not another business, because the rest of the day, it's not a Vons. People are not going there and coming back. It's fairly quiet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I have the last card, so if somebody has a card they have not given me, this is your last chance.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Daniel Skorza. I'm a Shalimian parent. One thing, I'm very happy with the school and what my children are learning. It's a... I think it's a benefit to Glendale to have such a school as Shalimian in Glendale. And as some of the speakers spoke, Glendale's a growing city, and I'm glad of that, that's happening. One of the things I want to tell you, as a parent, sometimes I drop off my kids, I'm very careful to follow the rules. We do park where it's designated. We're very quiet. We're very respectful of all the neighbors. We follow the traffic rules. One of the things I've noticed, though, that part of the traffic isn't from the school, that just flows out of the freeway. So if there is a traffic problem, that's something should be addressed with, you know, DOT, whoever with the state, with the county, with the city as well. Maybe there should be traffic lights that would address the issue. But to put all the blame of the issues that are occurring there only on the school, I think it's very unfair. There are other things, just... I've been a resident of Glendale for, well, see, I bought first property 31 years ago, so I've been here a long time. I've seen Glendale grow. I've lived in LA. I've lived next to schools. Education should never be compromised because of issues that are related to it. As with any issues that we live with in our lives, we try to mitigate things that are wrong. So I want the commission to consider that, you know, denying the school growth or what's beneficial to our community, maybe some of the graduates will be the ones that come out and solve these issues that we have. So we should be very careful about the decisions we make. Again, as a proud parent of two kids who go there, my wife and I religiously follow the rules of traffic. We're courteous to everybody. We care about everybody that goes there, and we're very careful not to have any problems with anybody there. So as a parent, I do want to, and as a resident of Glendale, I want to encourage you guys to vote yes for this proposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We do, is it five minutes rebuttal? We have five minutes.
Madam Chair, before you go into rebuttal, can I request you to bring up Glendale Police Department? Because I think Lieutenant Bickel has made a report on this case, so I'd like to ask a few questions.
Lieutenant, thank you. If you'll just give us your name.
Hi, Lieutenant Scott Bickel from the Glendale Police Department.
I read your report, and you had some concerns, and some of the speakers came out and talked about having some accidents on Lowell and other streets there. Are the accidents unusual, or is that just, you know, the accident count in that area normed to any other streets on Glendale?
No, it's really no different than... Can you hear me? Okay. It's really no different than any other school or place that's such, got such a high volume of traffic. And so one of the concerns, and you've heard them all tonight with the various speakers, and so without a mitigating plan in place, we'd have a concern, adding 200 more kids, not kids, but the cars. You know, we're concerned about the streets and the thoroughfares and the safety of the public. So we want to see some mitigating plan put in place to mitigate that extra traffic that would be caused by the additional students being dropped off or picked up at the school. It is a two-way, two-lane roadway, so it makes it very difficult for parents dropping off or picking up. Does get backed up. I've seen it up there back up past Altra, southbound, going almost all the way down to Honolulu. So it does get backed up in the morning and in the evenings when they pick up students. So by having this other plan in place to help eliminate some of that would be a huge help.
Mr. Lee, please.
You heard, you know, from the beginning, some of the proposals as a part of these mitigated measures. Do you feel comfortable with what's been being suggested? Because obviously, when they submit the detailed traffic plans, you know, you'll have a chance to review that and comment on that as well. But from what you heard tonight, I just want to hear your opinion as to what your thoughts are.
When I looked at the map for the bus zone area, I'm not sure what buses are going to use, but normally, school buses that have children on have the stop sign that gets put out on the side, so it stops all traffic. So if you're going to have 50 kids on a bus, or 25 kids on a bus, and you have that stop sign out, it's going to stop Lowell. So I'm not sure what other plan could be put in place to help mitigate that, but that was the only concern that I saw with the buses. But, you know, the kids walking across the street, walking through the school there with the other kids being dropped off, obviously, that concerns us, and they need to have something in place. But I heard about, you know, painting sidewalks. You know, Shalimian School's been absolutely wonderful partners and have helped us come up with strategies and traffic plans and patterns to eliminate some of the stopping, some of the no-left-turn signs and that sort of thing. That was all a result of them, you know, working with the police department to help those issues. So they have been great partners. And so if we have that plan in place, and it helps limit the number of people being dropped off, then, you know, we'd be okay with that.
Thank you, Lieutenant Bickel.
Any other questions for the lieutenant?
I do have a question from anybody from Traffic Department, hopefully, if there is somebody. Thank you, Lieutenant. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Cole of the Traffic Department, Engineering Section, yes.
Mr. Cole, what is the traffic today on Lowell? And what is... This is dubbed as a minor arterial. Is that what it is?
It is classified as a minor arterial, as a one-lane in this direction, as a two-way roadway, undivided two-way roadway.
What's the existing traffic on it?
The existing average daily traffic is roughly about 15,000. We haven't conducted a recent traffic counts. The one we have is probably about maybe eight years ago.
And how do you adjust that in order to get a number that is representative today? Do you add a certain percentage to it? You don't?
Well, depends on the area. Usually is roughly 1% per-year growth rate, but recently, we have noticed that some of the streets actually have decreased in traffic volume, maybe because of economy or whatever reasons, even in the downtown area, we have noticed some decrease in traffic volume. So the best way to look at this is probably to conduct a traffic counts.
When a minor... I don't know if there's a classification for this or not. Maybe I'm wrong, but do these, for example, a minor arterial, what is it designed for? What kind of a capacity it's designed for?
Actually, it's based on the cross-section of the roadway. The classification, we can call a two-lane roadway a minor arterial. We can also call a four-lane roadway a minor arterial, basically for a two-way, undivided roadway. Capacity is probably roughly about 16,000 to 17,000 or so. That would be the capacity of the roadway.
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
16,000 to 17,000?
No, no, 16,000 to 17,000. Sorry.
And I'm sorry, what is it now?
Sorry, right now, it's roughly about 15.
15?
15, yes. That was a while ago.
Okay, please, please.
Thank you. I do have a question from Mr. Bagdanyan, if you wouldn't mind.
Do you want to wait until they've done the rebuttal?
Oh, sure.
And maybe you can ask him during that point?
I could.
Is that all right with the rest of the commission?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Khan and Mr. Bagdanyan, five minutes.
Thank you. Once again, I'll save a few minutes for Jono to be able to respond to Commissioner Astorian's comments. To start, or to begin, there were a few speakers talking about the city of Los Angeles and the Sunland Tahunga, and there are projects in that area that we should be aware of. Future development that may or may not happen in the city of Los Angeles is not our focus. Our focus is the city of Glendale, and in this particular application, our focus is the children of Glendale and this school. I learned that, Mr. Astorian, your body language has revealed you've made up your mind, so I'm going to speak to the other three commissioners then.
Mr. Khan, don't make any comments about my body.
I'll take that back. In terms of, there was a comment, one lady was shocked that we are back here. There was a speaker, a gentleman, that said, you know, "You promised that the increase enrollment..." A few years ago, we said the gym will not increase student enrollment. The gym will not increase student enrollment. We were not looking to increase student enrollment. We looked at two separate items. The gym does not increase student enrollment. What does increase student enrollment? It's the more people coming into our community, more families coming into the area, and thus there is a demand and a need for the increase. But what is the process for that? What is the process for the increase? This is the process. Whether it was two months ago, two years ago, or any amount of time, there's a process that the city of Glendale has established to do a modification to any approval, any approved conditions, any approved variance, any approved discretionary application. And that's exactly what we're doing here this evening. We didn't increase the enrollment. We didn't come after the fact. We're coming before. We're following the process that the city of Glendale has established. Second Avenue, we're very interested in your deliberations, your suggestions, your recommendations as it relates to Second Avenue. Buses. Buses in the past were not successful. I thought we'd addressed that. They were not free in the past, and they were not strategically located in the past as they are and we are proposing here today. One gentleman said that the school has outgrown the space. I disagree. It hasn't outgrown the space. In fact, the very first beginning of the presentation, I talked about classrooms that sit vacant. That's not outgrowing a space. If I look at the classrooms, 30 classrooms, typical classroom size for Glendale Unified is 25 children. That would say 750 kids in this space that's already built on this campus. We're not asking for 750. We're asking for 700. That's not outgrowing a space. The traffic issues, I'll step back and allow Jono to address that while we have a few minutes left. Thank you very much.
I do have a question for the speaker.
Can we have Jono finish, and then you can ask both of them questions? Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I think the key issue that I wanted to discuss, and certainly additional traffic counts on different section of Lowell needs to be done, so that you have accurate information about it. Whenever you have a minor arterial that is connecting to a freeway, and there are many other streets in the city that, when you have, like Monterey, you have a ramp that goes right across Cordova, and we had to close that because all that traffic coming off the freeway, eastbound off-ramp, or westbound off-ramp, would go into the neighborhood. So it just draws the traffic. Lowell connects 210 freeway to Foothill, and then all the other streets, there are local streets, there are community streets, according to the circulation element, that all feed into Lowell. So if you took Wayne Cole's number of about 18,000, 15,000 cars a day, and you take the number of trips that I have counted, both directions, I mean, in the morning and afternoon, plus I added the teacher trips, you're about 780 cars a day that the school generates. Divide that by 15,000, the school generates 5% of that traffic. If you even set everybody, every single parent, 500 parents drive to the school in the morning, and 500 come back to pick up the kids in the afternoon, you're about 6% of that total traffic that is traveling on Lowell. So that other traffic, where the parents or residents on Lowell, rightfully so when they're trying to make a left turn, and in the peak hour, it will have difficulty, no question about it. The other point I wanted to make is that the north, when the parents are going to the school in the morning, is the opposite of the traffic which is going southbound. it's the opposite of the traffic which is going southbound. So there, the heavy is the southbound. In the afternoon, when the northbound traffic is heavy, which traffic coming from the freeway to go toward Foothill, it's outside, that peak hour is outside when the school is. The school ends at around 3:30. So the peak hour of the streets begins at 4:30 to 5:30. If you look at that pattern, you see that the heavy peak hour traffic is generated by the traffic that is through, going through Lowell, going northbound or southbound, not necessarily by the school. So it's only a percentage of the trips that 4%, maybe 6%, 5% to 6% is what's being generated by the school. That's all I want to.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Astorian, you have some questions for?
You answered my question, but Mr. Khan. Do you know what the word prestidigitation means?
No, could you define that for me?
It's means sleight of hand, like the magicians, they do what they do. And you've been accused of that with this issue of the 500 from the last hearing on. Could you elaborate a little bit more on that? Because that's something that it's still behind, the back of my head. You know, we've made a comment about it and so forth. I just want to try and see what the nexus is and so forth. Not to the sleight of hand, but the difference between the 500 and 700.
Sure. The intent, when we first submitted our applications, was back in 2010. That's when the applications came into the city of Glendale. It took a while for us to go through the public hearing process, as was stated. We made it very clear, the intent was to build this gymnasium. The gymnasium in and of itself was to take an outdoor play area, and I remember saying this several times, put four walls and a roof on it and make an indoor play area. We don't have classrooms in there. It wasn't to increase anything. We weren't looking at anything other than building a gymnasium for the children. Plain and simple. The conditions that were imposed on us were conditions that had been carried over from 20-plus years ago. We went through that process. We got our approvals. A few years ago, we started the construction in terms of the project. A few years ago, things were different. The economy was a little different. That's one thing. The other thing that was a little different, we had families moving into the area. That was a little different. That was a few years ago, not a few months ago, a few years ago. And as I made mention earlier, what is the process that we go through?
If you make this kind of succinct.
I'm trying to address this issue.
I understand, but the narrative is lovely, but long.
It's the only way I know how to address it. I'll try to wrap it up.
That's why I'm helping you.
Thank you. But the process, the process is, this is how we go through it. The increase in demand is from the community. It's from the families. It's not from the gymnasium. So in our opinion, we are coming back legitimately through the city process to request the increase in enrollment.
I'd like to follow up on that, if I may. The agreement that the variance is, is now totally up for reconsideration. Every single part of it, because that contract has three variances with it. So in changing the 500, the rest of the agreement is up for discussion. And yet, that discussion could be that we could then require the maximum amount of parking that's there, along with your other element, because that's part of what you've opened up in the Pandora's Box that you have. You've already built the gym, so to me, that, we can't say you can't build the gym. But there are other issues that were brought up at that meeting that now are open for negotiation again, and they're not discussed in here. To me, that's a very interesting omission.
Is that a question?
Not that you would like us to do that, but I understand your point. But even in the staff report, that sort of discussion was not brought up. But I'm just saying that when you reopen a negotiation and you have three different variances there, not just the 500 up to 700 as part of the negotiation, every single element of this previous agreement is now up for discussion.
I think that's what Mr. Lee alluded to with the Second Avenue. Is that correct?
No. That's not what he's alluded to. He may be alluding to that also.
That was a condition?
But there are three different, you have a use variance, you have a parking variance, and then all of those, and then you have heights variance. And all of them were.
Standards variance, yeah.
Standards variance were contingent on the 500 cap. So I just want to bring that to your attention and to the other commissioners' attention.
Okay, so what's the intention? What is it that we're suggesting to them? But as far as conditions or renegotiation, this reminds me of my negotiations in real estate, so.
Probably just like that. What it says is that if we have the ability and the opportunity to review addressing, meeting the parking requirements that was given an exception before because of the change.
Okay, what else?
Well, that's really the only one in there that I think that is a potential for us to look at as a condition of approval.
Got it. Now I understand.
That's what I was bringing up.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
What mechanism does the city, we have to verify that the new students who are enrolled will be taking the bus or using other means of getting there than being driven by just one parent in one car?
Commissioner Astorian, members of the commission, I think what I mentioned, and I've had a discussion with the school, is that there's, any private school, you enter into a contract. Like this is your tuition and these are the requirements that you have, the student has to comply with. And I've suggested to school that that requirement for a new student should be part of that contract. So that if you enroll your kid in that school and you're in this area, you would have to take the bus five days of the week. With exceptions, there should be some exceptions potentially when you have siblings or so on and so forth. That might be a consideration. But, or you would have to be, if they're outside, like you mentioned, north of, you know, north Glendale, doesn't make sense if they were to go south Glendale and come back up, that other provisions such as a carpool program, they have to be part of a carpool, which there is a mechanism for that to be verified.
I got that. My question is, how does the city, how can the city verify that you're meeting that?
One of the things that we can do, I think Roger mentioned that you do an annual count, but it could be quarterly counts, that making sure that, you know, number one, the number of trips that are generated, we can account for that, that's number one. The other two, that the school will keep a log of all the students that are required to be participating, that can be looked at or submitted to the city on a regular basis. So you can see which students was required, or how many students were required to participate in the busing. And this is what the ridership is on the bus and how that's been accounted for.
Yeah, I think that makes sense because we're granting something with the condition that this, the new students, if we do grant this, the new students will be taking other means of getting there. And if we do go ahead and do this, then we want to make sure we can, we have a way of verifying that. The city has a way of verifying it. Or if there's a complaint that if the school is not meeting that goal, then we have a way of handling that.
You can do sporadic checks. For instance, if we claim that we have three buses, just the number, and each bus has, let's say, 60 or 65 students, anytime, you're welcome to come. And when the bus arrives to the school or the bus leaves the church, you can come up there and have a quick count. See if we are complying with what we're saying or not. That's one way of doing it. Obviously, at times, there will be some sick students who will not attend, et cetera. But if there's a substantial difference between what we claim and what you see consistently, then obviously, there's a problem there. Other than that, you're very welcome to come and sporadically, without announcing, come and check it. Again, same thing allows, applies to the carpools. If we claim that there are 25 families carpooling, that means there's probably 12 or 13 cars. You can come and check exactly the way we were doing last year with a cardboard and hashtag and the number of students and so forth. You're welcome to do it anytime. Other than that, we can regularly send you reports anytime you want to come and check it yourselves. You're more than welcome to do that.
Thanks. I have a question.
Can I have a question? What are the consequences of somebody who is enrolled in your school repeatedly not meeting those expectations?
They will be kindly asked to leave.
And have you, have you actually enacted that?
What we did last year when we tried that carpooling scheme for a short while, when there was one family which we realized eventually cheated, basically, that discount privilege was taken back. In this case, if we ask them to carpool just be, to be able to attend the school, if they don't, then they're, they're going to be.
Asked to leave.
Yeah.
Well, you probably need a sort of a warning system that the first three times, you know, it's leading up to that.
Yeah, if it happens, that's what I'm saying. That particular family was doing consistently, okay? It's not just once or twice. They did it all the time, and eventually, they were caught and their discount privilege was taken back. Obviously, there's going to be some kind of a warning system. There's no to worry about it. But if it happens consistently, we can do that and we can afford to do that.
This is being referred to the carpooling now?
Carpooling or busing.
We're monitoring both busing and carpooling.
There are more effective ways of doing that, and let's wait till the deliberation gets there, but.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
You had one question?
My sisters went to the school. They used a shuttle that picked them up from their house. This was years ago. Is that the shuttle that you refer to that was cut?
At this point, you see, it's all up for grabs, okay? There's a bunch of possibilities that we can do. But again, it depends on the number of people and the location of the people. If we see that, right now, we foresee that the majority of our students lack in the past several years. Also, next year will be in the vicinity of the church, okay? That's a very good location to pick up a lot of students. But other than that, at this point, it's impossible to foresee exactly what. What we're saying is that busing or carpooling are both available options.
Yep. So if, if you, parents pay, you know, $50 a month and have a shuttle come and pick them up, that could pay for the service, and it's a nice convenience for their kid to be picked up.
That's a possibility. But what we're proposing right now is we're going to make it free, okay? To be able to encourage them.
Well, the bus would be free.
Yeah, the bus will be free. The shuttle is another possibility. In the past, there were some situations where some families got together, and had a shuttle, they paid, it worked nicely. But this time, we're trying to make it a little more systemic and apply to everybody, make it open to everybody, but mandatory to those who come after with the 500 number. And again, these are things that can be refined. But basically, we do believe that the mechanics will work because we tried it and it worked.
So based on what you're saying, the, after this is all said and done, you should have a reduction in the amount of cars? Because you're going to be instituting a bus system and requiring all the new students to use that or carpool, and then you're going to have incentives for people to carpool?
What I can say is the following. If for 500 students, we have, let's say, 245 cars, for any number other than 500, we still will have 245 cars, plus a few buses perhaps. Because every time somebody registers after the number 500, that person will not result, that person's attendance will not result in an additional car. That person either will be on the bus or will be carpooling. So I can't guarantee a reduction of the number. What I can say is that if for 500 today, we have 245 cars, okay? Or for that year, okay? If we have more students, we still will have 245 cars. The same number as, as we would have had with 500 students. That I can guarantee. But other than that, I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Karen, the public comment.
I have questions for staff.
Unfortunately, it's closed.
I have a question for staff. What is the mechanism that we can use to do the check that they're talking about? How have this done before?
Well, the way that we would most likely address this is, we would do it as part of the transportation and traffic circulation plan that they would bring to us later on for the community development and public works to review together. And one way that we would do this, that would be easier for us to administer, would be that on an annual basis, we would ask the school to report to us the number of parents or the number of students who would be enrolled on the bus transportation program. And they would update it every year, and they would say to us, last year, we reported X number of students, X number ended up using it, and this number, as of this year, this is the number. And knowing that on an annual basis, if then there is a complaint that there are potential violations of that, then we would check against those numbers. And that would be the way that we would investigate and confirm.
So a complaint would bring in?
Correct.
The city verifying that?
That's like every other condition that we put. The conditions are put in in case there is a complaint. We don't necessarily spot check and send people to check on the conditions unless there's.
Who pays for that? If there's a complaint and the city has to go, the city is strapped for resources, who?
The city would, we would have to use our code compliance staff or some other mechanism to check on that.
You're saying that this compliance is paid for by the city and not by the applicant?
No, the compliance, well, for us to check whether or not they're complying, the city would have to check to see if they meet the condition. But the compliance would be by the applicant. The applicant would report to us how many people are using the bus, and they would make sure that that's the case. If there is a complaint that somebody says, we suspect that the school is not complying with this condition, then we would have to check for it.
But what about the annual or quarterly surveys? That will be paid for by the applicant and not the city?
Correct.
Yeah, to bring it. Now, I don't see a condition for that. Is that, is that, nothing like that is proposed?
The condition is that they will have to submit a plan that will be approved by.
Oh, is that, is that in here as a condition?
That is, yes.
Yes. Which, is that the plan?
It's. It's condition, it's condition number 23. And, oh, I should say just 23, yeah. And it's also contained as a mitigation measure. And that is mitigations, measures number two and number three. Number two basically describes what they'll need to do, the busing service, and that, and the plan that they'll need to develop. Mitigation number three requires the traffic study.
But I guess there's no.
Where is that in the motion?
There's, there's no check.
It's in the mitigation measure.
There's no annual or semi-annual check on this.
So you're saying it's in the.
The traffic survey is designed as the check.
The mitigation is in the mitigated negative deck?
Correct, right, correct.
And it is included by default in, as part of the conditions? I didn't see that in there.
It should be a condition. Yeah, it's actually the last condition, that the applicant shall comply with the mitigation measures contained in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project.
So I guess what's missing here is just a time, a time of how often it gets checked.
If I may, Madam Chair, we actually would like to have the ability to have the. If I may, Madam Chair, we actually would like to have the ability to have the, the plan itself be submitted and those details be worked out in the plan. Because if then they don't work out, we can always go back and work with the applicant to adjust them. So it's better, as far as we're concerned, to keep it broad, the language broad like this, without those types of specifics.
And not referencing the mitigated negative deck?
Right. Other than the mitigated neg deck, which is actually there.
But it's not referenced. It references, not the mitigated neg deck, but it references the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project. The mitigated neg deck is not mentioned in any of the conditions.
Up with the last condition.
No?
Yeah. The 26.
The mitigation monitoring and reporting program is part of the negative declaration?
Correct.
So it is part of the...
Yeah.
Right.
So which, which, which part of this would require that annual or a timeframe that you will put on?
The third, the third mitigation measure requires the traffic survey to ensure compliance with mitigation measure number two. It requires it on an annual basis, and it also allows the Director of Community Development to request additional studies when there is, when, when, in this case, Mr. Higani deems that's necessary.
Okay.
And that's all contained in mitigation measure number three.
Okay. Mr. Yousayyan, can Mr. Lee add some comments in here? Are you through?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, I just want to, the proposal here today, the mitigation measures they are proposing, that there will not have any increase in number of traffic, you know, from the present condition. Now, through this check and balance, that if you find Mr. Higani, the violations of these conditions, what, I guess, the, one of the things you can do is that if, after repeated violations, that you have option to revoke, and, you know, their variances.
Well, or, yeah, or revoke this particular action if it is granted, we, we will have the ability to call for a public hearing and, and start revocation hearings.
Okay, so then, let's say we go back to the original condition with 500 students, and then, I guess it's up to school then to, to adjust their numbers, to, I guess, expel those students that, you know, if that happens.
That's correct. The idea is that we would empower or, or rely on the applicant to make sure that the conditions are in...
Sometimes, you know, these conditions, you know, not only City of Glendale, but, you know, City of LA and other cities that I've seen, it's merely slap on the, you know, on the back of the hand saying, you bad boy. You know, you shouldn't be doing this. But are we serious in, in implementing this?
I think our track record shows when we've had, and in this case, no disrespect to the school, but we've had operators, especially in North Glendale, the, the latest one was a particular restaurant that was acting as a banquet hall. It took us whatever length of time it took us and a lot of energy and effort, but we went after that particular business and we did shut it down.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have a question for our council. I have some concerns about the mitigated negative declaration, and I am challenging some of the validity of it. And so I would like to ask you, and I'd like them to be part of the public comment, but specifically, when I look at the transportation and traffic, and I see the less than significant on transportation and traffic, and it says, exceed the capacity of the existing circulation system based on an applicable measure of effectiveness, taking into account all relevant components of the circulation system, including but not limited to intersections, streets, highways, and freeways, pedestrian and bicycle paths, and mass transit. And it's given here a less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated, and I just don't, and I read through this, and it does not seem to bear, bear out based upon some of the facts and the data that are there. Outside of, it says, minor arterial streets generally carry up to 30,000 vehicles per day. And yet, we heard Wayne Ko say that typically, they are between 16,000 and 17,000. So somebody is using numbers that are definitely misleading here. The increase in enrollment could result in an increase in vehicle traffic. And I think that the cavalier response of Mr. Khan saying that it doesn't matter what the City of LA's actions and improvements are going to do are contrary to what CEQA is supposed to cover. And furthermore, if you look and we go to mandatory findings of significance, and we look on page 34, and I don't know if you all have the EIR, it was not connected to our staff reports. I received it at noon and read it over my lunch. But it says, does the project have impacts that are individually limited but cumulatively considerable? Cumulatively considerable means that the incremental effects of a project are considerable when viewed in connection with the effects of past projects, the effects of other current projects, and the effects of probable future projects. And I am curious to have your take on that. And the second take is, is you have, in our case here, one variance after another. And what are the cumulative effects of that? As we keep increasing and we keep adding this, I want to know how that increase in the existing non-conformity by 40% is dealt with by CEQA and has it been addressed in the mitigated negative declaration?
Madam Pro-Tam and members of the planning commission, thank you for your question. I'll take them one at a time. Let's start with the last question and work backwards. Hopefully, I haven't forgotten the first part of it.
All right.
But in talking about an increase in the non-conformity...
Yeah.
Let's talk about that first because the project is about, the baseline of the project is evaluated at the time the application is made. So that is the project. So for purposes of the CEQA review, what we're looking at is this request for the increase in enrollment and the impact that that would have in various categories, and principally here in this negative, mitigated negative declaration, is on the traffic.
Okay.
If I can segue into your earlier comment, which had to do with the, your contention that the analysis is not necessarily as adequate as you would like to see it, for, prior to the, there are a couple of things that can address that. First of all, you can request that additional testimony be provided to address your questions as part of the record. That information, if it is, it varies substantially, and it's really just providing minor technical information or, or change or clarification, that information can be incorporated into the mitigated negative declaration, what's called an addendum. So it's additional information, which doesn't show that there's a new significant impact, but what it does is it helps to clarify and amplify the analysis that already, that has already been completed. So it sounds like you have some questions there. Certainly, that information can be, be taken. An addendum to the MND does not require public circulation, but is to document information related to the public disclosure that's required under CEQA. So that's one of the ways that that can be addressed. You can request that testimony, request to have that information and testimony provided now and made part of the record. The mandatory finding of significance issue, cumulatively considerable, and we know that we, there, there's a CEQA definition which, which you read, and what I am hearing from you is, is the concern of whether or not past, current, and probable future projects have been adequately addressed with respect to making a determination of whether or not this is a less significant impact, what category of impact that would create. For purposes of the, the past and effective current projects, those are ones that we know that are on the ground, that are existing there. So within the context of traffic, that's within the existing trip generation, something that our traffic and transportation department would observe now. With respect to probable future projects, we're looking at a cumulative impact. The probable future project is one that is reasonably foreseeable, and the, the definition of reasonably foreseeable goes to whether or not there's an actual application there, not just a discussion of what might possibly occur, some planning documents or...
But an approved project.
Definitely approved. That's a current project. Certainly, an application has been made, and we would want that to be considered within a cumulative impact. But to the extent that there isn't a potentially significant impact related to cumulative projects that would, are either past, current, or future, that wouldn't require anything more than a mitigated negative declaration. So it has to be a substantial impact under CEQA that would...
Now, what would raise it to that significance? You know, you're adding, and I think I have the numbers close to correct, in the City of LA, which is right across the street, so it is a significant neighbor in its own right. 450 homes that are approved that come into Lowell, where the majority of inflects from... I'm, I'm asking this because I, I just want to be sure that, that, I mean, that is significant.
Yeah, and I also would like to add to that, that if there is such a significant, two projects on golf course and the other one going on in Tahanga, I am positive they have done their EIRs and their CEQA analysis and so forth.
And information's available.
And how come that has not been available to us if this school is going to change the balance of our neighboring city? I'd like to know why is it that they have not provided, or whoever, there's not been provided to us.
One of your options here, and certainly our traffic and transportation department and, and your staff can address the extent to which these projects and their associated environmental review have been completed and whether that information was available and/or considered. If it has, then you have your answer. If it has not, it's certainly within your purview to continue this matter until that information is acquired and provide additional, and that information is, is provided to you if that is a concern. That's within your purview.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome. Hopefully, I've answered all your questions. I think those were the three.
I think you did very well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have one more question for the lieutenant before we close this and deliberate.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. My question to you is, I know that we have records of accidents and pedestrian accidents from all over Glendale, and, and I know that they are kind of hotspots where schools are typically. Is this extraordinary, this situation here?
As far as the collisions or...
As far as accidents, whether they're pedestrian or fatal, non-fatal vehicle, pedestrian, vehicle, vehicle. I, I know I'm asking, you don't have all that data at hand, but, you know, a gross answer will be, give us a general idea.
Well, Lowell and Foothill, that used to be a hotspot. I haven't looked it up in a while, so, but that's right there at the intersection just north of the school. You know, when traffic leaves there, it either turns left to go into Tahanga area, or it turns right or goes straight. So that particular intersection was a hotspot for a while. I don't know currently what it is. But generally around schools with the additional traffic, we do have more collisions. I don't know what the stats are as far as this particular school. I can certainly research that and get back to you if that's appropriate and give you some better answers.
If there is a condition for the traffic plan to be approved, would it be appropriate for us to have the police department also be part of that approval if we want to alter the conditions?
We'd, we'd like to be a part of that process, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one more quick thing.
Sure. Mr. Yousayyan.
The principal of the school mentioned that they're going to reinstitute this carpooling program to incentivize current parents, and this isn't a question for you, so you don't...
Thank you.
Okay, sit down. Incentivize existing students to take carpool. In the conditions, the only thing close to guaranteeing that I see is number seven, which is, the board of directors, principal shall aggressively and continuously seek to improve carpooling. How can we strengthen this language to make sure they actually do it?
I'm sorry, you're asking, how could we strengthen this language?
For condition number seven, which says, the board of directors and school principals shall aggressively and continuously seek to improve carpooling. And the principal on record has already said they're going to institute the incentive of...
So Commissioner Yousayyan, you're saying that not as an option, but as actually an action?
To actually do it?
Yeah.
You put that as a, as a condition. What is the language that could be used for that?
One way, I'm just thinking out loud from the top of my head as you're asking the question, one way that they could do that, much in the same way that they are going to make it a requirement for the new enrollments to be subject to the bus and shuttle program, they could ask them to sign an affidavit that they understand that this is a condition that they need to abide by and that they will accept and agree to abiding by that condition, that such that the parents at the time that they enroll their children are aware of this condition, and they know that the enrollment of their children in the school could be jeopardized if they don't follow it.
Well, I, I'm talking about existing students because he, he stated that they're going to reinstitute that carpooling program because of the new budget, and they'll make this available for existing students, incentive. And the closest thing to the conditions that I see is number seven, but that doesn't exactly hold them accountable for that.
You could then add a sentence that say that, and that the, the, well, carpooling and busing program will be made available at no cost to the existing students as well.
Well, actually, I'm sorry to, to I mean, the carpooling should be, and I don't mean to be deliberating about this thing. Carpooling is supposed to be an incentive. In other words, it's not that it's, it should be at no cost. It should be something in the pocket of parent to be able to do it.
Thanks for the correction. But either way, the two programs should be made available, not only to the new students, but to all existing students as well. So that's something...
Well, the incentive would be the language.
Right.
To offer...
To incentivize.
Yeah. The incentives should be offered to everyone. That would be the one condition the commission could add, if, or you could add that sentence to that condition to, to make it explicit that these could be available to all parents.
So can we say this shall be implemented rather than giving them option, you know, as an option?
Can you give us the sentence that we could use? Thanks.
If we, if we, because there is a lot, a lot of smart questions have been asked.
All right.
And it's leading towards...
Now, are we through asking staff and council questions? Are staff and council through asking us questions?
Mm-hmm.
Are we?
Did you, the, the question from Mrs. Zimmerman, well, I think it was a good question.
Oh, all right, yes. Ms. Zimmerman managed to get a question to me that I would like to ask the applicant, is that on Friday, April 11th and Monday, April 14th, there were traffic monitoring setups in the neighborhood. Was that your traffic monitoring?
Yes, Madam Chair. We, I did some counts, just a very preliminary counts for one day because when I, the staff report came out and there were concerns about traffic, I just wanted to have an indication of what the traffic volumes are. The cities, as indicated, there was counts way back in 2003, so there was no accurate count just to see, to reflect that. It was just a one day, almost 18, 19 hours of counts because it was just kind of a one day Friday, and then school is out on, on Monday. So to give you a good indication, that would not be a good representative of the counts what is there, but the day... But the day we counted on Friday was eighteen thousand cars on Lowell. And the eighteen thousand cars, I also want to go on record to say that circulation of the general plan shows Lowell to have capacity for thirty thousand cars. A minor arterial is thirty thousand cars, whether it's two lanes or four lanes, depending on the setup of that. Nobody would like to see thirty thousand cars on Lowell. I wouldn't want to see thirty thousand cars on Lowell. But I go back to the fact that I wanted to mention that the school trips is a very small percentage of whatever number that you're talking about, whether it's fifteen thousand or eighteen thousand, that generates a small, and their peak hours are different. So when we measure something at peak hour, we calculate level of service during the peak hours. Those, the school will not be impacting the peak hour period, with the exception of the morning for a period of fifteen to twenty minutes, where the peak hours of the street and the school drop off overlap.
All right, thank you. I did have one more question, and it's an interesting question. With the addition of two hundred students with the existing restroom facilities, the concern I have is that when we add one or two people to a residential house, we increase the sewage capacity, and we also change and look at how that impacts the infrastructure of the city. The addition of two hundred students to a school that was built in, you know, fifty years ago, and without a changed infrastructure and adding that much more to the infrastructure was not addressed in the mitigated negative declaration that I could find. And I consider that a significant impact that is unaddressed. Where would that be addressed if it was going to be addressed?
I believe that we submitted, we routed this comment to, we routed the application to the Public Works Department. Did you receive a response, Roger?
I can see, give me a few minutes. GWP did not have any comments or conflicts regarding the case, and Public Works didn't either.
And did the fire department talk about twenty-five people within the capacity? I mean, I, these are issues I...
The fire department had, did have some comments on... They were more related to finalization of the gym and following up on some things that needed to take place with the gym construction.
So they didn't address the addition of two hundred students to an existing structure and the impact that would have on fire and safety?
Maybe they were thinking that they have staggered usage of the restroom, so...
Well, only one person at a time.
No, seriously, seriously. I've never, I've, it's an interesting thing. I mean, that's what I'm trying to find out myself.
Just if I may, Madam Chair, typically, if the department that is in charge of that infrastructure does not raise a concern, we assume that that concern does not exist.
That you have enough capacity?
Correct.
All right. And the fire department not addressing an additional two hundred within the same square footage?
Much in the same way, by not addressing that, we assume that they do not have a concern for that increase.
Well, at the original hearing, the fire department didn't even put what the capacity of the gymnasium was. They left it empty. So have they put that in now?
I don't know. And, I don't know.
I mean, all these, I know these seem like minutia, but they are health safety issues. And that's why I'm bringing up their, their health safety issues, their issues that are brought up if somebody changes their house, and if somebody is going to add more usage in space to existing elements. It is, to me, part of, you know, it would happen to me if I added onto my house, or if Mr. Lee added onto his house, or anyone here. And yet, it's not being addressed within this application. So it seems like an oversight.
I don't, I don't see any occupancy listed in the fire department comments. Yeah, I don't.
With all due respect, Madam Chair, by not mentioning something, we do not ever get into the conclusion that another department is conducting, is committing an oversight. We do think that they pay attention to their work, and when they review something, they take their professional responsibility seriously.
Yes, so maybe perhaps there is, they've looked at it and they didn't see any significant concern, or they didn't have, I mean, that's what I gather.
Well, those are the questions that I had. So are there any other questions to staff? I do have one. If you could help me phrase what I would like to ask for the addendum or the extra information for the mitigated negative deck, I would appreciate it, since you're probably more facile at stating that.
That would be as a condition of approval?
Certainly as a condition of approval.
That additional information be provided in the form of an addendum to amplify and clarify questions related to traffic impacts?
Would it be inappropriate to continue to have questions such as the impact of two hundred new students on the building and the infrastructure to the other departments specifically answered?
Again, that would be, you know, within the purview of the commission to continue the matter for purposes of having that additional information provided. I will say that for purposes of the mitigated negative declaration under public services, they are required to look at fire protection, police protection, schools, parks, and other facilities. Generally, the level of significance or the threshold of significance for fire impacts would be whether or not the activity would necessitate the construction of new or the alteration of an existing fire facility.
Exactly.
So that's what they're looking at. And so when they're looking at that, they are looking at, would there be a significant increase in the calls for service? If there aren't, isn't a cumulative or a project-based significant increase in the calls for service, that wouldn't therefore lead to the alteration of an existing fire facility or construction of a new fire facility. And based on that, there wouldn't be significant effects on fire protection. The same sort of threshold applies for police services as well. And then for purposes of public utilities, there are a variety of questions that are asked in the mitigated negative declaration pertaining to the adequacy of waste treatment.
I saw that, yeah.
I would note that it appears that this school was constructed in the sixties, and it does have, was built to accommodate the capacity of a student body that has additional classrooms that, from the evidence presented, aren't apparently being used. So one could make a reasonable inference based on those facts that the existing capacity would be adequate. Certainly, the applicant might present additional information for your consideration pertaining to that, but that would be a reasonable information that the commission could make.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, Madam Chair, you know, as one of the commissioners, I would not feel comfortable going back to our departments and actually, you know, asking their, this is like, you know, is our staff or other departments, you know, their reports? We're questioning the validity of that, and I do not feel comfortable with that. I'd like to trust the judgment of our staff to prepare professionally these reports and submit it, you know, for our review, and we've seen the department comments. So for us to make a condition to go back and to have them take a look at that, I see where you're coming from. I see some of the concerns, whether or not, you know, they've looked at it and questioned that, I feel uncomfortable with that.
They question our decisions?
Overtakes our decisions.
Any other questions? Shall we close the public hearing now for deliberation?
Yes, please.
Gentlemen. Mr. Lee.
I'll go. As a parent of a seventh grader, and I am part of that organized chaos every morning, taking my son to Tole Middle School, so I understand, you know, I'm not on the other side, but as a driver, you know, I go through that, and it is, it is part of livelihood in Glendale, if you're a parent of a student, or if your neighborhood surrounding the school. What I am looking at here is that, you know, the mitigated measures that are being proposed not to increase the traffic load and the proposals, is it really reasonable and is it really valid measures that we can actually track and then make them accountable? What I heard this evening, and that's what I was really concentrating on, is that, you know, if everything that they're proposing that works out, and then we have ways to make sure that it works out, they're proposing not to increase and not overload traffic count here. I like to give a, you know, penalty of doubt that this will happen. I heard testimonies from neighbors, and I feel that. I was, I think two of us, Madam Chair and myself was part of the commission, that this allowed, this approved the previous hearings, but then were overturned. So the school went ahead with the projects, and here we are. But we have to look at what we have here today. Yes, Madam Chair mentioned that, yeah, they're opening up the, by applying for this new application, they're opening up, you know, Pandora's box by going back to, going back on all these three variances. But my thought, or my thought on this is that what I heard tonight, that I felt pretty comfortable with the presentation. Obviously, there's a definite need with, with the school, and it is a sign, it is a good sign. I mean, you know, sometimes some of the communities are in the reverse direction. But if our community, if our city of Glendale is growing, and there's an absolute need for that, then, yeah, there needs to be change that goes with that. So I don't feel uncomfortable with that change. So with that said, and also Lieutenant Pickle has mentioned that this is not really any different from any other school sites. He did have some concerns about the busing. But as long as there is absolute, I guess, not absolute, but there is a way to implement some of the comments that other commissions have made as far as the coupling programs, the busing programs, and, you know, bottom line is it's not going to increase the traffic flow there. So I feel comfortable with the recommendation of the staff.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think it's interesting. No one here who came up and spoke, were opposed to the project, is opposed to actual more students to learn it. I think what people are opposed to is the amount of traffic that this school has attracted. And it sounds like from the experience of living around that school, it is a frustrating process in the morning. And, and I can't completely know what that experience must be like, but from the amount of letters that we've received, it sounds like it's a substantial impact to the community. And I think what, what people want is what's best for the community. And the concern, I understand, is legitimate. If you're adding more students, I think it's a legitimate concern of how this is going to affect traffic, because the current way, the current existing traffic, it's not, it's not amazing, just like a lot of other schools. Maybe this is a little bit more than others. I'm not exactly sure. But I can understand why it is such a frustrating process for, for everyone who lives around there. My goal in looking at this is to see if, first, if we're adding more students, are we adding any more traffic? And based on what is presented to us, and based on the safeguards that are given to us, the answer is no. And if, and if, and if there are new traffic, there will be a way for the public, for the residents, to file a complaint and have the city check it. Okay? I am more comfortable with that after, after hearing, after getting that assurance from the city, from the city. The other goal of mine is to see if we could reduce the amount of traffic that comes here through this process. And the condition that I wanted to propose was to make sure the requirement, which the principal said he would do, to offer an incentive for people to carpool is installed, is implemented. I think if that's implemented with the availability of this bus system, then there is a potential of actually decreasing the traffic there, which I think is a goal for all of us. So I would hope that from what may come out of this is a better scenario for everyone. I hate that the residents have to deal with that and the traffic, and I wish there was something more we could do. But it is a balancing act between making sure we offer the community this service, and there's an increased demand for it, but also balance between how much we're impacting traffic. And if I, if I'm assured that there will be no increase in traffic, then I am okay with that. I think it's fair, as long as it's checked, and as long as people hold them accountable for it. I think the school can do a better job of making sure they're better neighbors. There are different programs that the city does. One is Walk to School Day, and we have a Walktober every year. And, and every year, there's twenty or so schools that are involved. I'm not exactly sure if the, this school has been or not. But the, but on a weekly basis, every Friday, some schools participate in a Walk to School Days also. And I want to see the school make sure they not only do that, but also, I want to encourage them to find things like that and showcase it to the community, their goodwill. Another thing is to make sure whoever you have guarding those areas or maintaining the traffic, to make sure there isn't this, all this double parking or anything, but be a good neighbor to make sure you can reduce those kinds of impacts. And the third is to maybe publish some kind of a rule of roads guide to parents to list some of the rules of what you can and cannot do, because some of this is a safety problem. Because if there is double parking going on, and I know you said there isn't, but I don't think we can all be sure if there isn't or not, I mean, neighbors are saying there is, then we want to make sure the parents who are dropping their kids off are doing it in a safe manner. And Sean Milan should show the community that they are doing everything that they can to educate... can to educate the parents on how to drop off their kids safely and with little disruption to the neighbors. I hope you will do that. I hope you will show that goodwill, and I hope the neighbors will continue to hold the school accountable for their own sake and for the community also. So with that, I, I will go ahead with the, supporting the staff's recommendation with the conditions that I mentioned I would want to add, add to it.
Mr. Astorian.
You don't want to?
I'm the chair, I get to go last.
Perpetual right? So, let me state this, that regardless of what side of the issue you are tonight, I'm sure that I'm echoing the sentiments of my fellow commissioners, that we welcome your comments, your letters, and your views. Having said that, there is nothing reconciled about this matter. In other words, I don't think and I don't feel that these two, two issues, which is the, the traffic calming for the neighbors and the traffic issues, because that's what we're talking about, are mutually exclusive from the desires or the aspirations of the school. I really think it's a doable thing. Before I go forward, though, I just want to mention to Mr. Kiesel, I liked your report a lot. I thought it was a lollapalooza of the reports you've done thus far. So, congratulations, seriously, I mean, and I had to get that out. And I'd like to also say that, you know, this is no different from most schools in the city of Glendale, whether it's Keppel, Montevista, or others. My kids attended Verdugo, Verdugo Woodlands, we had the same issues, you had, you know, coating off Verdugo Road and so forth. And so, I've been there, done it, and we all put up with it. The three, my thoughts revolve around three issues, and I, and I like to think of them as eupneptic. Hopefully, they will be. Number one, and I'm, and I'm surprised that none of us on the dais spoke about this, is because if you, those of you that remember 2011 conversations very well, the then Commissioner Stephanie Landrigan suggested preferential parking treatment for that neighborhood.
You wanted me to go first, because I was going to do.
And, and it is, it was a good idea then. I would have supported it if I was on, on the commission at the time, and it's an even brilliant idea today. Because by implementing that preferential parking, you are going to be alleviating all of the issues that you have on Abella, and you are going to be eliminating the problems that you have with the double parking and so forth and so forth. Of course, educating, implementing, and enforcement, enforcement comes into the play. Now, that could be for the hours that the school is, the drop offs and the pickups for the school, and it could be worked out, and I will leave that to the discretion of the planning director. I, it's my understanding that a preferential parking will only, we cannot institute it as a planning commission, we can make the suggestion to the city council as well as the TPC or the, the Traffic and Parking Commission. So that's the first part that I would think, I would suggest. Second is this busing issue. Now, look, generally speaking, I, I like to take small steps, incremental steps, think big, but take the small steps, prove it, let, let's make sure it works, take the kinks out of it, tweak it, take the problems out of it, and then go to the next step. So, my suggestion to my fellow commissioners would be the following. Let's do this thing in a three-stage approach. They have their okay on the 200. However, the first stage would be 70, that's probably one big bus or two buses, the second stage would be 70, by the time they get to the 140, they already have, have been acclimated in handling the bus, TDM, and so forth. And eventually, when you are at 200, then you know how to handle several buses, and that would work well for the school. So those are, those are my views, as far as the busing is concerned. And by the way, I'm a product of Catholic school, so I was bussed from second grade to 12th grade, St. Dambosco School. I'm used to it, it works, and it works beautifully, a thousand, and that school, by the way, was located in a terrain just like Sharmiliyan's school, in a cul-de-sac. Well, the cul-de-sac, I'm referring to the Second Avenue, which I'm going to have some comments in a minute or so about. So, these are the things that I think will work and will alleviate the traffic, the double parking. Abella is the most impacted street on that, on the, on the series of those streets, and it is not fair for one or two streets to take the brunt of the impact. I think Second Avenue, not necessarily driving traffic. If Second Avenue can somehow be used for parents to park their cars on Boston and be able to walk the children off the back gate to school, I would welcome that in, in a New York minute. That's the way to do it. I'm not saying overload Second Avenue and get Mr. Heinall bent out of shape. No, that's not what I'm saying. I am saying a walk in traffic would not have any impact. Heck, the consultant is counting people as cars walking from Albertson's. I think I can car, I can count people as people walking off of Boston to, through Second Avenue to the school. The other thing that I want to also add is the carpool incentive that you've all touched on. It should be significant. Now, this busing issue, mind you, the students have enrollment contracts. I mean, unequivocally, unequivocally, this has to be in that enrollment contract, these new 200 students that are going to be added, and again, at the, at the 70, 70, and 60, or what, or 60, 70, 70. And somehow, our city attorney will come with some, the language cannot be nugatory. In other words, it has to be consequential. I mean, that's, that's what I think it's a fair demand, and it needs to be there. If you can't, if a parent can't do it, can't live with it, then Sharmiliyan's school is not your place. Now, I was conflicted about what I am proposing right now, because if I were, when I was taking my kids to school, whether it was Verdugo or Wilson, and a school principal or, or an administrator would come to me and say, you know what, you got a bus, I don't want you to drive your kids, I would be really offended. But having said that, this is the case it is, this is the deal that was made a while back, and we're going to continue with that with Sharmiliyan. I think they are doing a good job, but here's the problem. You see, CQAs, less than significant impacts, sounds good according to CQA, according to the civil engineers and the paper and so forth. If Mr. Curry has got two accidents, or have had, the family has had two accidents, this CQA means nothing to them. So, this less than significant impacts is significant for this neighborhood. This is why I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is a three-pronged approach. Preferential parking, busing that can be controlled and actually really monitored well. The third obviously is the carpooling. The carpooling incentive at 50 bucks a month, in my opinion, we need to be a little bit more generous, think about it, but your minimum should, should be 50 and no less than that. And I will conclude by saying that, if you were to go, by the way, the GUSD, Glendale Unified School District website, is a cornucopia of information, great information. Let me read you one little thing from them, and this has to do from their strategic plan. This is Board Policy, page one of three, and talks about facilities. Strategic principles, enrollment and facilities. The district's long-range goal should be to limit, limit enrollment at elementary school, at elementary schools to approximately 600 to 800 students, middle schools to approximately 1,200, and high schools about approximately 2,500. In a city that we collectively have approved, passed a measure S in hundreds of millions of dollars, improving the facilities and the school system of our city, that shows to me that the community cares deeply about the education. With it comes issues with the schools. This is not to say that neighborhoods around the schools have to take it all, no. This is why the mitigating factors, as much as we can, we will do it. Again, if this was a GUSD school, we would not be sitting here. But having said that, again, this was an arrangement made by Sharmiliyan and the neighborhood, they're trying to be a good neighbor, and I think with what I just suggested, if we can implement it, if we can include it in our conditions, I think they will do a much better job as we go forward. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Astorian. Well, I definitely still believe that whether it's preferential parking or limited parking within the neighborhoods, it was addressed at one time, it was denied by the city, and I think that having that part of our approval is, is key to bringing a commity between both parties. We can't assume that Sharmiliyan can continue to impact the neighborhood with providing some recourse to the neighborhood, and I am in favor of certainly, whether it's a limited parking during certain times, preferential parking requires purchasing a parking pass and could be an economic impact, and it also requires that you have to, if you do it during normal times, you have to get a permit for someone else who is not there. So I think a limited, but we would have to also talk with the police department about enforcement of it. I would like to also consider, in the mitigation and monitoring plan, quarterly review, survey of the parking for the first two years, and I would also, would like to make sure that the traffic plan is not just approved by the Director of Public Works and the Director of Community Development, but also the Police Department. I think, I would also like to add that the school voluntarily provide metrics yearly on their success rate in implementing all of this. I work for UCLA, I'm an accredited program, and I have to provide metrics to maintain my accreditation, and so I have to, I have to main, I have to have a metric on whether I have all, reached my carpool level or reached my busing level, and that needs to be something that you provide yearly, I think, not just incremental monitoring. And I, I think that every time we're here, I, I know that we need to continually remind ourselves that we're not here judging the quality of this school ever. The quality of the school and its benefit to the individuals who go to that school is never in question. We're looking at how it is compatible with the adjacent land uses and the neighbors, and, and that is, I think, the major impetus of being here, and to make sure that when there is a change, and the effects of that change do not cause undue hardship to anyone else, just to the benefit of another. We often have to subjugate one desire to benefit, benefit the community as a whole, and that is, I think, the preferential parking requirement deals with the fact that the community is impacted, and how can that be addressed? And I would hope that in that recommendation, that Sharmiliyan School comes out in full support of it and does not try to kill it, because that, to me, would seem to be unneighborly. And I want to give a shout out to Commissioner Yousayin, because he's, he's of the generation who, who doesn't believe cars are the most important thing in the world. And, and I share that with him, and I love how he constantly reminds us of, there are other alternative modes of transportation, and there are better ways to actually climatize our children to the future and be stewards of the environment. And, and his solution, and his suggestion, which was stated, but sort of subtly, is that it would even be great to reduce your numbers, not to try to stay where you are, but to reduce them. And that could be a goal internally that I think would be really, really powerful. Those are my comments.
That would make a huge statement, by the way.
Madam Chair, can staff kind of summarize all the comments?
If I may, to make a couple of points about the two, two of the comments, Madam Chair. One is that with regard to preferential parking, it is not, the, what we could recommend to the Planning Commission is that if you would like to address that, you could address it as a comment to the Transportation and Parking Commission, that if it comes before them, you recommend that they approve it. However, you cannot put it as a condition of approval, because it is not within your purview, number one. Number two, it needs to be generated as an application by the neighbors to the Transportation Parking Commission, and it will be analyzed by that commission when the time comes. So if you would like to recommend to the neighbors to submit an application and recommend to the TPC to look at that favorably, by all means, you could put that as, as a comment. With regard to the incremental increase, with regard to the buses, I would recommend, for the sake of our ability to manage that with the school, to have that be considered as part of the transportation plan that they submit, that they will, they will add students incre, as they add students incrementally, they stay in touch with us to see if they have added enough for one bus and then second bus, and put some sort of a monitoring situation as opposed to make that a condition, because the school year begins and the applications will come to them. If you are going to approve 200 extra students, the school's ability to be able to absorb them or not is important at a particular time of the year, not based on the number of buses that they can accommodate. So, we would recommend that you consider rewarding that condition in a way that it will, it will be something that we can monitor with the school, as opposed to do the increase in enrollment incrementally.
Mr. Hagani, my question is this. Can we recommend that there will be limited no parking time on the street? That doesn't have to go to a hearing, does it?
You could recommend to the city to consider that, if that's what you would like, however, that cannot be a condition.
Well, I think one of the ways that you've been very effective at, and perhaps I will be, is that when this, you know, this is something that I, I strongly believe, I don't know what the mechanism is that we need to use, because I think preferential parking will take the burden off, especially Abella, especially Abella, it will take it off. I mean, we know it. So I don't know what the mechanism is. Here is, here's the goal, Mr. Hagani. Between those hours of 7:15 and 8:44 or 9:00, and in the after, between 2:00 and 3:45, I don't want any parents to have the ability to, you know, obstruct the, you know where I'm headed with?
Yes.
I mean, look, they're impacted. The school has shown a great deal of good faith, but it's not enough. We need to do something.
Well, we can continue it until there is a preferential parking zone there.
I don't, I don't, I will not vote for a continued.
The issue is that with the preferential parking regulation was not within the applicant's control, and the applicant does not even control the ability to apply for preferential parking. That, that relies, that lies with the neighbors, who can come together and submit an application. However, I, as I said, as the planning commission, you can always recommend that the TPC look favorably as, at an application that may be submitted for preferential parking to, to address this. How, other than that, whatever happens in the public right of way is not within the purview of the planning.
And so that I don't have a problem. If the neighbors have to initiate it, I mean, they know, they know they have at least two or three or four supporters here, so.
Could we condition the school pay for it with the added funds?
I would leave that for the council to say, that could be a problem, I, I don't want to use legal terms, but that may be beyond their, your ability to address what their impact would be.
I want to make sure that the addendum that I spoke with, with Ms. Muneen, to the mitigated negative declaration is included in the conditions.
So can we hear the whole thing?
Is that all right?
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, again, there are two ways that that could be addressed. You could request to have that information put on the record now. We do have a representative from the, you could open the hearing to accept information if there is information available. And I'm getting a, a nod that that information is not available. You can request that that information be provided in the form of an addendum to amplify or clarify the traffic impacts from...
Of City of L.A.'s.
From City.
And the cumulative other approved.
And that, that would just be, that would just be a memo, in a memo form, that would be added to the negative declaration. It's not required to be circulated.
I request that.
No problem with that.
Mr. Lee and the rest of the commissioners would be happy to hear what you have managed to describe.
I'll do my best. The first comment, I wanted to remind everybody about the...
Is your speaker on?
It is, yeah. I wanted to remind the commission members about the recommended modification to condition number 19 that I spoke about earlier. Modification to condition number 23, the sentence that states the number of buses, bus stops, locations, and routes shall be included in the, in the traffic control plan approved by the directors of Public Works and Community Development and, and the Police Department. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Condition number seven, the board of directors, school principals shall aggressively and continuously seek to improve the carpooling ride-sharing of its clientele. Proposed traffic plan shall be submitted to the city's traffic and transportation coordinator and the community development department for approval. And then, along with that condition, a carpool incentive shall be implemented and shall be available to all students. Does that?
That's it.
Yeah.
The council here has actually an alternate language.
Okay.
Members of the planning commission, Madam Chair, I would recommend this condition. The board of directors, school principals shall institute an incentive-based carpool/ride-sharing program, offering an incentive of at least $50 a month, and shall make such program open to both existing and new students. I don't know if that improves it a little bit.
I love it.
Okay, great.
Well, hang on a second. The new students are supposed to be bused.
Well, no, not all, because if the student does not live down in that area...
Got it.
He can do the carpool.
Got it.
But actually, the, the incentive, the incentive shouldn't be offered for the new students because the new students are required to carpool or bus.
I thought I heard that if they didn't want to bus, that they could do carpool, but I could be wrong. That's what I heard, though.
I think all new students are required, regardless of an incentive or not, to carpool or bus. So this should be, incentive should be only for...
This is for the existing students.
For existing students. If they, if they choose to incentivize for the new, then that's up to them.
Right, okay.
It's really for existing.
Semantics.
With the strike of, strike out of the "and new," that condition that I just read, would that be okay?
Clarify, this is $50 per family, not per student.
Right, per car.
So if you have three kids, you don't get $150.
Yeah.
Continue, Mr. Kiesel, thank you.
I'm sorry. Let's see. We went over the preferential parking zone. The commission suggests that the surrounding neighborhoods submit a sep, a sep, a preferential parking zone application. The commission would support this zone.
In the meantime?
I think, or a limited parking, or a limited parking designation.
Yep.
The commission will support.
That as well.
I need to time.
Meaning the restrictions on time?
Yes.
Limit time, yeah.
Mornings and the afternoons, the drop-off and the pickup hours.
Or a restriction on parking during certain hours of the day?
During peak.
During.
During the school opening and...
During, during school pickup and drop-off times?
Thank you.
So if any one of the neighbors have guests after 6 o'clock, they don't have to go around and go park somewhere else, so.
How about the metrics from the school?
That the school shall provide metrics yearly to ensure compliance with the conditions. I didn't really, that didn't really gel.
With the transportation demand management.
Okay.
The TDM.
Okay, that the applicant...
Mr. Kiesel?
Yes.
You know, I know you went over this on the 19, you know, after you striking out the second sentence, I mean, the second part of the sentence.
Right.
You are now limiting to the maintenance vehicle only. I think Commissioner Astorian was, wanted to add foot traffic only on the Second Avenue for option for school to have, you know, a possibility of dropping kids off, Boston. So I think that needs to be added in.
Okay.
You didn't forget that, did you?
I did not. I had to go forward in my notes to take care of the preferential parking thing, and I didn't go back. So, all right, so access from Second Avenue shall be limited to maintenance vehicles and pedestrians dropping...
Just say pedestrians.
Periods, okay. Can I jump back to the previous one, just to make sure the condition works? That the applicant shall provide yearly metrics to ensure compliance with the traffic...
Demand management.
Demand management.
Plan.
Plan.
Plan. Okay, so there's this one. There was something about quarterly review of parking for the first two years.
Yes, you have, in the mitigation monitoring plan, you have yearly, annually.
Annually and at the discretion.
I'm proposing quarterly for the first two years and then at the...
That's for the parking only? Is that for the parking only?
Well, you had mentioned, you had mentioned parking, and the, the mitigation, the mitigation measures don't necessarily address parking. They address, you know, the bus.
The applicant shall conduct a traffic survey, number three, to ensure that the project is in compliance. Said survey shall be conducted by a qualified professional on an annual basis during the school year.
Okay, so you want that, you want that on a quarterly basis for the first two years?
Hang on a second. Let's, let me get a sense of the cost. If it's a $5,000 expense, it's egregious for us to say, you got to spend five grand every quarter, 20 grand a, but, you know, I'm, I'm willing to hear something that is more reasonable. How much does that cost, by the way? Do you know?
We can ask.
He's expensive, probably.
I don't think so. If, yes, if you can give us that price.
Depends on, you, you want a similar survey that we've done. It's how many parents are driving to and from the school. It won't be per, every time you count it. It could be more, not more than $1,000.
So $4,000, $5,000.
There...
That's a rough estimate, depending on, you know, how detail we want to make it because now we're essentially also making sure...
And you already have a baseline.
Yeah, we have a base and, and you start with it. So that's, that's the average cost.
There is something built into the mitigation measure, number three, that the director of community development shall have the authority to request additional studies as deemed necessary. So I don't know whether you feel comfortable with that, but that's also...
Yes, if I may, if, if the, the purpose of the, the survey is to inform staff of how it's going, I must say that once a year or maximum twice a year is sufficient for us.
Maybe we should connect it to enrollment. When is the, when, you don't have new students in the middle of the year, do you?
So, so the best, actually, the best time would be sometime during, in the middle of the school year. Once a year would be more than sufficient for us in terms of how it's...
Is it, is it, is the school, is it one school year or is it broken up by two semesters?
I would say during the school year, when the school is in full session, once a year, with, when the, the enrollment is at maximum, that would give us actually a full picture on an annual basis.
Doing quarterly just...
No, no, we're okay. Once a year, the way that it is, just leave it the way it is. Anything else?
I believe, oh, the incremental approach to the, the students, I was trying to figure out how to write that into the conditions.
I just, I just complimented you on your report. Don't put me in a bad spot. But Mr. Hagani had some views on that.
So I would say you can add it to the condition about the transportation traffic plan, that the, the school will work closely with, with the staff...
Yeah.
To monitor the incremental number of, increased number of students and, and how the bu, the busing is adjusted to accommodate that.
I apologize, I remember you...
I'll say in that.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, there is one more, or actually, two more conditions that were mentioned. I'm not sure if you want to include them. One was Commissioner Yousayyan's suggestion that the school implement more programs to increase the amount of people that walk to school. So I wrote out a proposal that we add a condition, quote, "that the school shall use its best efforts to implement other programs, including but not limited to walk-to-school events, that shall be aimed at decreasing traffic impacts." If you would like to add that condition, I think it's broad enough, but holds them to some standard.
Yeah. No, that's good. And could we add one that talks about creating some rules of road to distribute to parents?
We could add a sentence to that. In addition, the school shall publish annually a guideline for parents regarding traffic rules, traffic and parking rules.
Yes.
Okay. Safety measures. And safety measures. One more condition, Commissioner Landgren, or Chair, Pro Tem Chair Landgren, this addresses your concern. Another condition that, yeah, staff shall prepare an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration to amplify and clarify the traffic impacts from other surrounding projects.
All right.
One thing I want to add to that one condition from the previous condition we just talked about is to also add on the website, like GUSD does.
Okay.
And so the full community can see this as well.
Okay, we will add that.
And there was a recommendation that I made, and while it's not a condition, but it's something that I'd like for them to look into it. Sometime in future, at least that to be a goal for it to be reached, as opposed to using diesel, you know, start thinking about CNG and so forth, if it is at all possible. That is important.
Could we add fuel?
Clean fuel.
Could we add that as a condition for the bus?
As a comment?
Not a condition, but it's something that to be worked towards.
An aspirational goal.
You could say, consider using clean fuel vehicles to bus students.
Well, how, how are we now? Is everybody...
I think we're happy.
I think I'm conditioned out.
All right. So I would like to have a roll call, please. Well, we have a motion. Can I have a motion?
Yeah, let me find the motion.
There are actually two.
There's two, but there's three.
Eric, one motion is for the, the variances and one motion is for the, the parking reduction.
Do we need to vote on one motion at a time?
I think so, yeah.
I'm sorry, I...
The answer is yes.
Do we need to vote on one motion at a time?
Yeah, yes.
Do we not...
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I would recommend that you first vote on the motion approving the...
Use standard?
MND.
With the addendum, we don't have that motion in front of us.
No, we, I, I saw it somewhere.
What's the MND?
It says short...
Mitigated negative dec.
Oh, where's that motion?
We don't?
We do not have that motion.
Let's just be sure that we place the condition concerning the MND in, which, which motion have we placed that in?
Use variance, standard variance.
That could be part of the motion approving the standards variance and use...
There you go.
Great.
Okay, so you guys, Commissioner Lee, do you have the, you have one, one of the...
Yeah, I have the use and, yeah, I have, I have use and standard.
Okay, so I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to use variance case number PVAR 1403259 and standard variance case number PVAR 1403260 located at 4444 Lowell Avenue and approve, and after having conducted a hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby approves said use variance case number PVAR 1403259 and said, said standard variance case number PVAR 1403260 in accord with the findings set forth below with the amended conditions as said.
We would suggest that before the word approves, you would insert hereby adopts the mitigated negative declaration.
And the, and the recommended addendum.
And the recommended.
That the planning commission hereby adopts the mitigated declaration and the noted changes to the conditions.
Addendum.
And add them, to the addendum.
Second.
And Mr. Lee has seconded that?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yousayyan?
Yes.
Chairperson Pro Tem Landregan?
No.
Okay.
May I have a motion on the next?
I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to use variance case number PVAR 1403259 and standards variance case number PVAR 1403260 located at 4444 Lowell Avenue and after having conducted a hearing, wait, on said matter, I'm just reading the denying.
Yeah, you're on the, you need to flip the page.
And after having conducted hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby approves said parking reduction permit case number PPRP 1403257 and said in accord with the findings set forth below.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yousayyan?
Yes.
Chairperson Pro Tem Landregan?
No. Thank you very much. You all have been a marvelous group of people, very courteous to each other. Thank you. You're welcome back anytime, and we will continue with our meeting. If you could quietly, if you would not mind quietly leaving, we're continuing the meeting. If you could carry on outside, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are conducting the rest of the meeting. If you don't mind talking outside, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. All right. If I can find the rest of my agenda. May I, I have so many papers here. All right, here it is. Do we have the agenda? Oh, thank you. Oh, my gosh, thank you. All right. Community Development Department updates.
We have no updates.
Thank you. Comments from commissioners?
I do have one, just to make this meeting a little longer.
Oh, good.
Tomorrow, the city is having a pedestrian safety workshop from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Central Library, and I encourage everyone to attend the workshop. It's going to be a way for the public to be educated about pedestrian safety and also for the public to give their own ideas of what it's like walking in, in the city and how to improve it, the experience and the safety.
Mr. Lee?
Madam Chair, I have an announcement. This Friday on the 18th, midnight, I'll be taking 12 ambassadors, students from Toll Middle School and Rosemont Middle School to Korea, to South Korea, to visit our sister cities, Kimpo and Goseong, and also our friendly city, Boon. It's a one-week trip, and they're all excited to, to go there. Actually, tonight at 6:00, there was an orientation, which I missed, because there was a marathon meeting here, but we're all excited and ready to go and ready to represent Glendale as an ambassadors.
Safe travels.
Mr. Lee, Godspeed. That's a noble, noble cause.
Thank you.
I have one other announcement, is on May 3rd, the Glendale Run, Hike, and Walk that is put on by the Glendale Open Space and Parks Foundation and the Parks and Community Services, Community, whatever they are, sorry, Department is going to happen, and if you haven't signed up, you can, and it's a great opportunity, and I hope that to see you there. And it should be very great and fun. It covers all abilities. Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.